Is anybody hearing me?
Hello, this is.
Good evening and welcome to our council meeting on February 23rd. The meeting is hereby called to order. And would you please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag, which has been lowered by the request of President Biden in remembrance of the half a million persons who have died from COVID in the last 11 months or so, 805 of whom in Ventura County, 86 here in Thousand Oaks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Proton Engler, my apologies.
Here.
Mayor Bill De La Penya.
Present. Thank you. We don't have any requests for continuance. So we will now go to special presentations. And we will begin, as always, with our city manager Drew Powers with the latest update on COVID. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bill De La Penya. Just another brief update for you this evening. As the mayor mentioned just a moment ago, the numbers out today did indicate that we've crossed the threshold of 800 deaths, 805 deaths in our community. The cases are continuing to slow with just 137 new reported cases today, which is good news. And that trajectory, we hope, continues and that we're able to get closer to the next tier and allow for additional reopenings in our local economy. I did want to share a little bit about vaccinations as there's been a lot in the news about that. The county has administered now just under 160,000 doses of COVID-19 vaccines. 113,000 of those are first doses and about 46,000 of those are second doses. One of the biggest challenges, as I've mentioned in recent weeks, has been the supply of vaccine. And while some of the recent weeks we've gotten a little bit more than anticipated, the numbers of those eligible continue to outpace the doses that the county has to administer. Beginning on March 1st, an additional groupings will be eligible for the vaccine. And those will include teachers, farm workers, and grocery workers. The county anticipates that this will add about 100,000 eligible people to the rolls eligible for vaccine. And so that will further challenge that supply constraint. Also, beginning March 15th, the state is going to allow those 16 to 64 with various comorbidities. And they will be releasing a specific listing of what those comorbidities are. We'll have them eligible to receive the vaccine as well. So we are operating a site at the Global Senior Center. It is one of the county's sites along with the former Babies R Us in Oxnard and a number of other sites, including the Fairgrounds. Vaccine appointments are made available on Mondays. And they, to the extent they have additional appointments during the week, they become available as well. Vaccines are also being distributed through other channels and the federal pharmacy program. And that includes CVS and Walgreens and other allocations through Bonds and Albertsons. Also, major health insurance and health groups, UCLA Medical, Kaiser, will have their own set of side allocations as well. And they are administering doses to patients. So we're hoping that March is the month where the volume significantly increases in terms of the number and amount of vaccine that we will be receiving. And that is it for my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, for that update. And next, we are proclaiming February as Black History Month. Since 1976, February has been designated Black History Month to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Black History Month calls our attention to the inequality and injustice that continue to plague our cities, states, and country. And it is our responsibility to advance the American notion of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all. We believe it is important to learn from the many lessons found in history's failures and successes, disappointments and triumphs as we strive as a community to pursue an inclusive vision and maximize our potential to positively shape our community. The City of Thousand Oaks is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and across the nation. We invite all members of the community to renew their commitment to ensuring racial equity, understanding, and justice, and to participate in activities designed to advance the cause of freedom and equality for all. And I believe that Councilmember Jones would like to make a few comments.
Hello?
We can hear you.
I didn't realize that you were going to call on me. I'm sorry. I presume that someone conveyed that message to you, and I probably asked them to do it. Let me just say, as someone who has taught American history and government for a long time, that it's just such a pity that we had to go through this terrible period of terrible injustice to black people as a result of the Civil War and the Jim Crow period that followed. I firmly believe if Abraham Lincoln had not been assassinated, that it's likely that this terrible period of black supremacy or the supremacy of the whites over the blacks would not have happened. Because what we got at the end of the war was a Southerner who, although he didn't believe in slavery, he had a very low opinion of African Americans. So just to sum this up, we have gone through a period of around 150 years, of which the black race in America has had terrible problems with equality involving housing, involving work, and involving every aspect of life. And it was not necessary. And it was not having anything to do with some innate inferiority about white people. Because that obviously is not true. But yet, we've had this myth. Just one little bit more of my personal history. I grew up in an all-white community and moved to another all-white community. I never had an African American in school with me until I got to college. And what did I know then? I knew what everybody in my age group and who had been exposed to the media in the '30s, '40s, '50s, in which for a black person to get into the cast of a movie, you had to come in through the service entrance. He had to be a maid or he had to be some kind of a menial worker. And what was the image of that? It was a gentleman called Stephen Fetchit, who couldn't talk right. And he was lazy and he was stupid. And that was the prototype. And I think a lot of people thought that was true. That's the way they were depicted in movies. And movies were rather new then, or talking movies. And so we began to believe whatever we saw was true, especially if we had no personal experience. And so to get into a movie, if you were a male African American, you were perceived as lazy, stupid, probably stole chickens, got drunk, and played dice all the time. And we're very afraid of ghosts. That was a big deal, that was in that stereotype. So let me conclude by saying that I hope we can make amends for all these years. And a lot of it was not really the fault of many other whites who didn't live in the South and didn't really know the truth. But the truth is, African Americans are just as talented, just as maybe even more creative for many of them than others. And they have made a marvelous contribution to our society. And I would like to praise them for persevering and achieving great things with terrible odds against them. Thank you. I didn't mean to take too much time here.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. We have another item under special presentations. And it is, this has become my most favorite moment of the council meeting. It is the Community Commitment Award. So every month, I recognize one person in the community who's doing amazing work completely under the radar. Why? Because after one year of darkness, we need to look for rays of light. So why not honor those who make our lives brighter? And tonight, you will meet one such ray of light. His name is Luis Tun. Luis works with the Westminster Free Clinic, which has been providing free healthcare to our underserved community members for more than 20 years. While attending Newberry Park High School, Luis volunteered regularly. He worked with Westminster's group called SALUD, Student Advocates Leading Uplifting Decisions. This group addressed many of the detriments that lead to poor health and lower life expectancies. He also volunteered nights and weekends on Westminster's Health and Education Equity Project. And he worked as a medical assistant with the organization. In his senior year of high school, Luis was selected out of 100 students to be the student manager. This was all in addition to helping at the clinic every week from 4:30 to 11 o'clock at night. And just like Wilbert Ak, our inaugural honoree last month, Luis, too, is the first in his family to attend college. Luis now attends USC. And he continues to give his time to Westminster Free Clinic as a board member.
Hi, I'm Claudia Bill de La Penya, mayor for the City of Thousand Oaks. And it is my pleasure to present the award of Community Commitment of 2021 to 20-year-old Luis Tun. Luis started volunteering with the Westminster Free Clinic at age 15, when he was a sophomore at Newberry Park High School. And he has made a profound impact, not only on the patients, but also in other areas where he influenced policy decisions within the Coneco Valley Unified School District. He is a ray of light after a year of darkness. And here now is Luis Tun. And I will present this award to you. Congratulations. I want to thank you for everything you have done for our community and continue to do. You're not done yet volunteering. And with that, I want to introduce now a significant mentor to Luis. She is Lisa Zafenili. She is the executive director of the Westminster Free Clinic.
Congratulations, Luis. I'm so excited that you are selected for this award. You are amazing. You're our rock star. You've done so much for the community and made such a difference all of these years, starting when you were a sophomore in high school. You provided access to healthcare for thousands of people every year. We promoted you to manager because you were such a great leader your senior year. Then you helped in our education equity work, making sure all young people have a chance to be having that educational opportunities to succeed and thrive. Even during college, you came back and you helped us and even did your internship from USC at our clinic, helping with data management and infographics that we could really show the work and what we were doing during COVID-19. And through you, we were able to raise funds because of that. And that's why we selected you for our Board of Directors. And I really feel honored to know you and honored to work alongside you in all these many, many years at Westminster Free Clinic and helping the community. And thank you for that.
Thanks, Lisa.
Luis, you're such a wonderful example for others in our community. What was it like being given an opportunity to volunteer, to treat patients while you were a sophomore in high school?
I felt not only a sense of community here, but a family as well, just because, you know, I grew up in a very unstable household at times. And I think Westminster Free Clinic was a positive outlet for me to not only take care of patients and help the community, but also be able to focus on my education and be able to attend USC eventually.
Tell me about how you were able to influence policy decisions regarding equity here in the school district, which I think is an amazing story.
I helped to create an education equity program within Westminster Free Clinic to help to share a lot of the issues and obstacles of lack of equity within our education. And eventually, when I started taking the tests for AP exams, Advanced Placement, I had to get the exam fee for college credits at the time. And I remember when I went into my College and Career Center, when I asked for the fee reduced waiver for low-income students, I remember the price was $50. And I had come to Lisa and asked her, like, I can't afford $50 for five exams that I have, a total of like $200 or something like that. And I remember we came up and we went up to the Board of Education to really advocate it because other communities, like in the Los Angeles District, Oxnard, and other communities, the fee reduced waivers were $5. And I think we were able to help educate the Board of Education as well as advocate and lower the pricing back. So now for AP exams for low-income students have reduced fee waivers, $5 again. So I think it's creating that education equity to be able to give opportunities to other low-income students that might not feel comfortable enough sharing their experiences and their lack of resources to really be able to get the same opportunities to go to college.
What message do you have for other teenagers who are looking to perhaps volunteer or do something that is fulfilling and meaningful?
I think the biggest thing is me is like, be able to look at the bigger picture, what's beyond what your circumstances are right now. I remember growing up, we were living in a single room, a two-bedroom apartment, just to be able to afford rent for our monthly bills and stuff. And I think coming and volunteering at Westminster Free Clinic, I was exposed to a lot of different opportunities, like meeting new students, being able to go to do leadership camps, being able to talk to doctors and physicians about what their career looks like and where they went to school and things like that. And I think a lot of people think that it's not possible. But I think with the right help, mentors like Lisa and other people in the community are willing to help you, I think you're able to reach the goals that you want in life, whether it's going to higher education, becoming a working professional, or even changing the cycle of poverty within your family as well.
That is simply remarkable. And for that, we thank you so much for being a shining example, for being that ray of light that we need in our community and beyond. Thank you so much, Luis. Congratulations once again. If you know someone special who has been committed to volunteer work in our community, please go to the website and submit a nomination.
So here's someone who had to choose between spending $1.50 on his bus fare or making photocopies of his English essay. And he's at USC now. I think it's remarkable. Luis is with us this evening. Hi, Luis. Can you turn on your microphone?
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm currently located back in LA right now. So I'm, you know, keeping busy during the semester with midterm season coming up at USC. So really trying to buckle down and get all my exams ready and prepare for midterms.
That's great. What do you have planned for the next, for when your semester ends? I see that sometimes you do spend your school breaks or summer breaks doing other things, like sitting on college panels to speak to high school students. What do you have planned for this summer?
Yeah, so I originally had thought I was going to go to law school for the longest time when I started college. But now I've been more interested inside business, consulting, and other fields in the finance industry. So I recruited this past semester for like investment banking companies and finance companies as well. So I'll be interning at Goldman Sachs in Utah, Salt Lake City, doing the human capital management division. And then I'll also be working in other projects with the clinic and just really helping to improve their alumni network as well as helping them continue to get more funding for patients.
Wow, that is fantastic. You really deserve this award. Congratulations again. And on behalf of the council, we wish you the very best, best of luck this summer, and of course, beyond that. Thank you so much for everything that you have done for our community.
Yeah, no, thank you all for having me here today. It's an honor to be recognized for the award.
Great. Take care. So now you see why this is my favorite moment of the evening, of any council meeting, really. We have some really wonderful people here. And with that, speaking of people and community, we have community members who are engaged in local government and want to give us feedback. And that takes us now to public comments. And during public comments, I would like our viewers to know that we will have, for the very first time in the history of Thousand Oaks, Spanish-language interpreters. And so you may experience a little bit of a delay. Just wanted you to know that that is happening. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. As the mayor did mention, we do have a Spanish translator in attendance to assist the speakers who have requested the services. And again, there may be moments of silence and brief delays during this time. We have 23 individuals that have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes and six minutes for speakers requesting translation services.
Thank you so much. When I say "community," that means community members of all races, ethnicities, and certainly languages. Our first speaker is going to be joining us via video. In fact, all of them are, I believe, this evening joining us via video, is going to be Patricia Lones, followed by Calvin Canche and is going to be Patricia Loans, followed by Calvin Canche and Tammy Coburn. And I wanted to make clear that if you're speaking to a particular agenda item, you may want to wait until then because I see that some of them may be wanting to comment on Agenda 9A, but we shall see. Okay. Good evening, Patricia.
Mayor, council members, and attending members of the community. I'd like to take this opportunity to encourage all our community members and organizations to nominate a senior volunteer for the Council on Aging Senior of the Year Award. Did you know that Thousand Oaks is fortunate to have 1,200 senior volunteers who contribute their time and energy to aid over 80 nonprofit agencies, schools, and community organizations? Each year, senior adults donate approximately 275,000 volunteer hours, providing much-needed support to the Thousand Oaks community. To ensure that the dedicated senior volunteers get the recognition they so rightly deserve, the City of Thousand Oaks Council on Aging dedicates an annual event to honor senior volunteers through the Senior of the Year Awards Ceremony. As we know, this year has been especially challenging. However, there are seniors who, despite the pandemic, continue to volunteer their time assisting community members. Eligible applicants must be a resident of Thousand Oaks over the age of 60 and have been exemplary volunteers over his or her lifetime. Applications are now being accepted through April 1st. All nominations will be reviewed, and the Senior of the Year will be selected by a subcommittee of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. For more information and to obtain a nomination form, please visit the Council on Aging website or call senior services staff at 805-381-7362. And again, our website is www.toaks.org/seniors, and our senior service staff number is 805-381-7362. I'd also like to remind our seniors that the Senior Adult Master Plan Survey remains open until March 15th. To date, we've received 260 responses. However, we are looking for so many more seniors to participate in the survey. The online survey is available at www.toaks.org/seniors, or you can obtain a paper survey by emailing our email address at councilonaging@toaks.org, or call our senior services staff at 805-381-7362. I'd also like to invite our community members to attend our Council on Aging meeting on March 3rd and hear from guest speakers Lisa Buono, dean at California Lutheran University for the 50 and Better Program, and Jerry Clifford, the Ollie Program at Cal State University Channel Islands, talk about their respective programs for community members 50 and older who have the desire to pursue knowledge, social engagement, and extend their learning through class courses and extracurricular activities.
Ms. Loans? Ms. Loans? I'm sorry, but you're way above your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Calvin Canche, followed by Michael Lawson. Good evening. Do we have Calvin?
Buenas noches a todos.
Calvin?
Sí.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to be here tonight. My community is so important in my life, and that is why I do the best I can to get involved as much as I can. But it is difficult when my efforts are limited because of the community itself I try to help. My goal today is let you know how important it is to be more inclusive of people like me. I want our future to be one where neighbors are empowered. The way I explain it to my children is that people like us are excluded from so many important things, things that are affecting us in our lives. I do understand the difficulty in having to have materials in Spanish and in English, but that would be the only avenue for us to have not just a fair city, but a fair world. And this is the voice of so many that could not come here tonight. There are so many groups that are trying to make this a better place to live, and we ask you to make an effort the way they do and create the change that everyone asks for, but very few make. Thank you for this opportunity and be able to share my words with you. I hope that my words are not lost this evening. I hope you help me create a better future for my family and yours again. Thank you, everyone.
Muchísimas gracias, señor Canche.
Thank you, Mr. Canche. I'm grateful.
It's now translating for me. If you could please let Mr. Canche know that perhaps if he wants to reach out to one of our city staff, Melissa Hurtado, for example, if he would like to discuss further opportunities to become more involved in the community. Thank you.
Are they not saying everything in English first? I'm sorry. All I heard was all Spanish. I thought it was just translate.
I'm not sure who that was who was speaking.
Yeah, I'm trying to... Hello?
Yes.
This is the interpreter. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to interpret what Mr. Canche said.
Yes.
I am Calvin Canche. I do everything possible... I do everything possible to help my family. It is difficult for me to let my children know that sometimes people aren't so inclusive.
Oh, excuse me. I think you already interpreted everything that he said. It was a simultaneous interpretation.
Okay.
So we did hear that. We did hear everything. And so I was just saying, if you could relay to Mr. Canche that if he would like to reach out to our city staff, Melissa Hurtado, for example, in order to discuss other opportunities where he can become more involved in the community.
Of course.
Okay. I'm not sure who asked the question. Okay. Then we do have our next public speaker, Tammy Coburn. And followed by Tammy will be Denise Pedro. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the AMI/AMR Cal Water Sensor Meters. And I'm representing our community of Hillsborough in Thousand Oaks. And my question is, why are we looking to do this now? At these financial... It's such a financial hardship. And at these times, why are we considering this? We need to look into what's happened up in Monterey County and how they told them up there that the rates were going to come down, but instead the rates went up. It was all a falsehood. They were saying that it was going to be able to detect leaks quicker. None of that's happened. We need to do some research before we raise our rates here. If we continue to do it manually, we can keep them at 25% cheaper than what they're telling us it's going to cost us to change it over to an AMR meter. Smart meters, again, are questionable. A lot of people don't want them, I included. If they come to my house, I will reject the smart meter and have the analog kept in. We need to do more research before we have them strong-arm Thousand Oaks into getting these meters. We need to understand what this expense is and why we're going to be paying so much more for it. Thank you so much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Denise Pedro, followed by Mandy Jacob. Good evening. And if all the speakers could please list their, where they live, which city they live in. Thank you.
Good evening. I live in, my name is Denise Pedro. I live in Newbury Park. I am representing the Casa Conejo tract this evening. And thank you, Mayor Bill de la Peña and city council members for allowing public comments this evening. I'm here to urge the City, the Thousand Oaks City Council to vote no on implementing the AMR/AMI wireless water meters. In Casa Conejo, these are older homes, and all of our water meters are out at the street. It would be a huge cost for us to have to absorb, to move these meters closer, hardwire them, maybe into our low voltage on the sides of our houses. This is unnecessary when it can be done up to 25% cheaper another way, not going with the wireless meters. More research is needed on the extra costs that it will bring, these wireless meters will bring to businesses and residential customers. And I agree completely with the previous speaker and her comments that we need to carefully study the AMR/AMI impact on the residents and businesses that already happened in Monterey County, and their costs actually went up. It did not help their community. It burdened their community. And we need to know exactly what we're getting into. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mandy Jacob, followed by Lillian Teran and Leigh Anne Holland. Good evening.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you so much for having us and city council members. It's been a while since I've been able to address the city council people. And of course, I'm also coming to talk about the smart meters only because this is something that obviously is a radiation issue. And, you know, when we started our group back two years ago, we were talking about cell towers and the radiation coming from there. And now, obviously, the smart meters have come to Thousand Oaks. One of our members from the Coalition, when we started two years ago and we went nationwide, is from Monterey, and she is the one who submitted the protest against it. And I did submit to your public records her, first of all, her protest against it, which has fantastic numbers, so you can see how inefficient these smart meters are other than being able to detect leaks. And then I also submitted the transcripts from the MPWB, the municipal water district, and why they did not go ahead. It really isn't financially going to benefit us, but I don't really want to go into that because you probably know all that already. And you'll see from the supplements exactly, you know, how it won't benefit the community. But this just brings up an opportunity for me to say, you know, we've been coming to the council for a year and a half now, talking about radiation, and it has now gone from cell towers to smart meters, and it's just going to keep growing. The problem can't go away. And I did submit one of the ADA requests to the city attorney that I did over a year and a half ago, just a request for discussion around my home. And that has never been dealt with. Unfortunately, every time I say that I have made an ADA request, they say it's been done and they are looking at the actual disable, me being able to be on these calls disability. I'm talking about discussions, my request for disability discussion around the radiation in the environment. And I'm only one of 14 people. All of us have different doctors who have submitted this. In fact, the city itself has a pending lawsuit from one of the ADA people. Of course, last time I spoke, Jonathan Kramer said it had been kicked out, but I did send that to public records so that you know that, in fact, the city is being sued. So this is a problem that's not going to go away. It's only going to get worse. And we're just requesting that financially, this doesn't make sense. And EMS people, disabled people, cannot have these smart meters on their house. So from all aspects, we're just asking you to kindly, you know, vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will require Spanish translation. Lillian Teran, followed by Leigh Anne Holland, and then another Spanish speaker, Jessica Quintanilla. Good evening. Buenas... Sí, buenas noches.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Alcaldeza Bill de la Peña, miembros del consejo y personal de la ciudad. Mi nombre es Lillian Teran y soy presidenta de la Ante Comunidad Conejo. Mi familia y yo somos residentes de la ciudad de Thousand Oaks. Conozco a algunos de ustedes porque han hecho trabajo comunitario con nuestra organización y quiero agradecerles mucho su apoyo. También quiero mencionarles que Adelante Comunidad Conejo es parte de una coalición con otras organizaciones comunitarias donde tratamos temas de equidad e inclusión en la comunidad. El día de hoy estamos aquí para contarles nuestras historias personales y nuestros sueños, esperando que algún día se conviertan en el sueño de la ciudad. Antes que nada, quiero agradecer a la ciudad por su rápida respuesta. Hace exactamente 15 días, el señor Willy Lupca y yo mandamos una carta a algunos de ustedes donde pedimos que se tradujera información importante al español. Ahorita podemos ver mucha más información del plan general y además la encuesta de las alternativas del uso del terreno en español. Además, Adelante tiene programada una reunión con uno de sus consultores para que nos explique más del tema en nuestro idioma. De antemano, muchísimas gracias a todos los involucrados. Además, quiero mencionar que como presidenta de la Ante Comunidad Conejo, me toca escuchar muchísimas historias conmovedoras de parte de muchas de nuestras familias. El día de hoy hay algunas familias que compartirán esas historias con ustedes también. Sabemos que muchísimas familias latinas tienen que vivir entre 12 o más personas juntas para poder ser capaces de pagar una renta. En particular, mi familia y yo cuando llegamos a este país, era muy difícil para nosotros. Algunas veces después de pagar la renta y los gastos, nos quedaban solamente $50 para poder sobrevivir una quincena. Nosotros teníamos permiso para vivir aquí, y mi esposo es un ingeniero. No me puedo imaginar, por las cosas que pasan, las familias de escasos recursos y que no tienen permiso para vivir aquí. También quiero mencionarles que mi sueño es que mis hijas puedan ser independientes y puedan vivir una vida digna. Esto implica que puedan pagar la renta de un departamento digno también. Finalmente, quiero decirles que si nosotros queremos que la ciudad de Thousand Oaks sea una ciudad donde todos se sientan bienvenidos e incluidos, debemos escuchar la voz y opinión de todos. Es importante para poder construir una comunidad que todos podamos progresar juntos. Muchísimas gracias por su atención y por su tiempo.
Muchas gracias. Are we going to wait for the translator? I know we see it at the bottom being translated, but if we could have a verbal one as well? Is that possible? We're still experimenting with this, so please forgive us. This is the first time we're undertaking this effort. So the first speaker, we had a simultaneous translation. And this one, we had a simultaneous closed caption translation. The first one was a verbal one. Is the translator going to translate this one verbally as well, is my question? If she can hear me.
Hello, this is the interpreter?
Yes.
I'm sorry. When I toggle between Spanish and English, sometimes my audio doesn't toggle at the same speed. And so I was unable to interpret into English what the speaker was saying.
So what we saw at the bottom of the screen was translated?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now, my question is, are you going to also do an oral interpretation? Or are we just staying with the written one?
Well, if the speaker is in the English channel, then it would be consecutive. So the speaker would have to pause for the interpreter to render her interpretation.
Okay. Let's see what happens then with the next speaker. Again, be patient with us. We haven't done this before. Our next speaker is going to be Leigh Anne Holland. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Leigh Anne Holland, and I live in Newbury Park. I am the leader of Thrive Conejo, and we are part of a coalition of community organizations that works together on issues of equity and... that works together on issues of equity and inclusion in our city. We are sharing our stories tonight because we want our dreams for our families to be part of the dream for this city. We are Canajo Unido. For the past three years, Thrive Canajo has been advocating for inclusive education in the Canajo Valley Unified School District, with a particular focus on creating systemic change for students with disabilities. We know that academic and social inclusion in school offers the best chance for better outcomes for children with disabilities. Yet at some point, our children grow up and need to make their way in the world. As a parent of a child with disabilities, I am constantly thinking about the barriers that she will face. People with disabilities are twice as likely as the general population to be unemployed, and for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities like my daughter, the number is closer to 80%. My daughter is twice as likely to live in poverty. And the number that scares me the most, she is seven times more likely to be a victim of sexual assault. My daughter may walk this earth for many years after her dad and I are gone, and no longer able to provide guidance and support. Her ability to live safely and successfully will depend on a network of community services and caring friends and allies that she will gain along her journey through life. Right now, families like mine face limited to no options for housing and integrated living for their adult children with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Thousand Oaks. So, when I learned about the opportunity to give input on the 2045 General Plan, even at this late date, I had high hopes about the ability to create real change, and I still do. I must confess, it was disheartening to read the General Plan guiding principles and realize that people with disabilities were not included there. I believe that people like my daughter have a lot to offer this world and deserve a chance at happiness. I am grateful to project and city staff that advocacy and engagement are beginning to shift the conversation toward equity. But my question for the council is this: will you make room in the Thousand Oaks General Plan for people like my daughter? People who don't follow a traditional path to success, and will likely need a community of support to get there? If we want Thousand Oaks to be a city that's welcoming and inclusive for all, then we have to make room at the table for everyone's voices to be heard. Only then can we hope to build a community where everyone has a chance to thrive. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I am going to actually toss it, before we go to the next speaker, to our city, our analyst, Melissa Ortado, regarding the Spanish translation. I realize that the written translation was not visible on cable or on YouTube or anywhere else, except for those speakers that were actually in the Zoom meeting. So, we're going to have to, we're going to need all of these Spanish speakers to stay on the Spanish-speaking channel, so that the translator can translate verbally. Ms. Ortado?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. If those of you joining in English can please go to the interpretation box at the bottom of your Zoom, I believe you got instruction from somebody in the breakout room, and select the English button, or else you will not hear the interpreter interpret in English. Those of you on phone unfortunately will not be able to hear the interpreter, so you'll have to listen online or on T R TV. Para ellos que están escuchando en español y van a hablar en español, por favor marca el español que está bajo en la computadora, que se dice interpretación, marca español y vas a estar en otro canal de español y cuando la interprete ahora habla en inglés la gente en el reino pueden escuchar. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. So, for our next speaker, it's going to be Jessica Quintanilla, and we would hope that we have a English translation for, for that by the interpreter. Let's, let's see. Buenas tardes?
I was, I'm going to speak in English, though.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, Council members and city staff. My name is Jessica Quintanilla, and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for 12 years. I am a member of Adelante Comunidad Conejo, and I've seen firsthand the difficulties Latino immigrants face in this community when it comes to housing. It is important to start with the fact that most undocumented people don't have many living options because of their status. Hence, their possibilities are limited, as you can only choose in areas in the city that you must know, and you might be familiar with it. I know this because I have family members living in these complexes, and the rent is not cheap. Landowners usually take advantage of this situation and don't care of the, don't take care of the properties, and let these families live on substandard conditions. Families relied on renting out their rooms, closets, and their living rooms to be able to pay the full cost. Now, let me remind you that most of these families have other priorities too, with a very limited salary, childcare, transportation, and food, just to name, just to name a few. This means the many resorts to live in, in two-bedroom apartments with at least three families together, and sometimes sharing one bathroom. Even with my family, and I as a business owner of a house cleaning company, we cannot afford a home, a home in Thousand Oaks, no matter how hard we work, because we'll be unable to pay for a mortgage in the current situation. We know that as a community, this change will not happen overnight, and it will take some time. But what we need is the city of Thousand Oaks to include us in their plans. Latino make about 20% of the population in this city, and we are essential to the revenue of Thousand Oaks. As a group, we demonstrated that we are vital more than ever during this pandemic, as many of us work as essential workers in agriculture, cleaning, and supermarkets. We are well aware that socioeconomic inequality exists in this country, and how it can negatively impact our community and our children's. Therefore, let's do something together as a city that can be a model for nearby neighborhoods, has a path toward a better future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Evelyn Guerrero, followed by Ulalia Soriano. So first, we have Ms. Guerrero with a translator.
Hola. Hola. Señora, buenas tardes.
Señora, buenas noches, por favor, permítame.
Quisiera yo, este, compartir mi, mi trayectoria de trabajo, quienes sepáis. He he and I were renting, por donde quiera, y no, no, no. A los 15, 18 días me están sacando porque tengo dos cejas. Soy madre soltera.
Señora Guerrero? Señora Guerrero?
Y madre viene a una casa donde hay, donde hay aproximadamente.
Señora Guerrero, me puede, me oye?
Y, y tengo dos cejas.
Okay, we're waiting for the translator. Can the translator, can the English language translator begin to translate? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sí, sí.
Señora Guerrero, me puede escuchar? Puede permitir que interprete?
Hello?
Señora Guerrero, me escucha? Por favor, permítame interpretar. I was saying, I'm.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Evelyn Guerrero.
She can't hear us.
Soy una inmigrante que viene a este país, ando rentando por donde quiera, y no, no.
Since I got here. And now she, and I've been, but I've always been kicked out between 15 and eight days, because I will be kicked out in 15 or eight days. I am a single mother, and then her audio went out.
Yeah, we had to lower her audio because we couldn't hear what the translator was saying.
Thank you.
She, yeah, it's, see the Wi-Fi connection. All right.
I would just like to mention that when the interpreters are in the interpreting booth, they cannot hear the Spanish speakers in, that are in the Spanish channel. They have to come into the English channel, but then they have to, we have to go to consecutive interpreting, which means that the speaker speaks an idea and pauses for the interpreter to render their interpretation. Otherwise, we would, we will not be able to interpret what the speaker is saying in Spanish. But all this has to be done in the English channel.
So it does have to be in the English channel, okay.
Yes, because the booth doesn't have two-way audio.
Okay. If Melissa Ortado can hear me, I'm not sure if we can work this out while I go to other speakers at the moment, until we figure out how to do this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to skip over Spanish-language speakers, because I want to get to the other speakers, and then give staff time to figure out how we can do this more effectively. But we will still have them this evening. I will now go to Carol Shelton, followed by Willy Lupka, Olupka. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, Council members and city staff. My name is Carol Shelton, and Thousand Oaks is where I call home. I am on the leadership team of Thrive Canajo, and one of the vice presidents of Adelante Comunidad Canajo, and we are part of a coalition of community organizations that work together on issues of equity and inclusion in our city. We are sharing our stories tonight because we want our dreams for our families to be part of the dream.
Evelyn, soy Melissa de la Ciudad.
We, we are Canajo Unido.
No, es que tú.
I want to thank you for listening to the voices of the Spanish-speaking community by offering Spanish documents and translation services. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 40 years. I have three children, my oldest is a young professional, and lives here in Thousand Oaks. My youngest, my two youngest have ADD, or Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. They have hopes, dreams, wishes, and aspirations, all are centered in Thousand Oaks. Our family has stayed in Thousand Oaks despite being priced out of living here, because of the open spaces, our vibrant Canajo Recreation and Park District therapeutic recreation program, and our local schools. I believe and trust that if any city can provide for my family in the long term, it is Thousand Oaks. For people with ADD and their families, allies are crucial for our loved ones. Being raised and continuing to live in these, in the same community is essential to develop and maintain these allies. Much of the work we do as parents for our loved ones with ADD is to integrate them into the community, provide community-based instruction, and teach them to navigate the community safely. My boys love and understand Thousand Oaks. I want them to have a place to live once I am gone. I, and I am counting on our allies to ensure my boys and others like them continue to be safe, valued, respected, and included here in Thousand Oaks. My boys will need lifelong services and supports, and will likely be considered very low-income. They will need low-income housing. My hope for the city is that we have housing, services, recreational opportunities for the diverse community, community that lives here in Thousand Oaks, one that values each and every one of us as equals, and deserving of the open spaces, schools, services, and allows for a variety of housing opportunities. My hope is that we build a community where walking and biking are safe. My boys will not be able to drive and will need to walk to access their community on foot. My dream is to build small communities throughout the city that would be required to have very low to low-income housing options. Ideally, some of the proposed village centers in the 2045 General Plan will focus on the needs of the most vulnerable population of adults with ADD. My hope is that the city of Thousand Oaks continues to engage with the community as a whole, and ensures equity and voice and representation for marginalized communities. Because we want Thousand Oaks to be a city that's welcoming and inclusive for all, we have to make room at the table so that everyone's voice can be heard. Only then can we hope to build a community where everyone has a chance to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Willy Lupka, followed by Heather Swanson, and then by someone named Rich. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and city staff. My name is Willy Lupka. My family and I have lived in Thousand Oaks since 2001. I'm a member of a nonprofit local group called Buen Vecino, which is Spanish for good neighbor. Buen Vecino is part of the Canajo Unido Coalition of Organizations dedicated to equity and inclusion in our city. In early February, we were contacted by community members who were concerned about access to the General Plan update to Spanish-speaking residents in Thousand Oaks. So, we reviewed the website and information, and at that time, we saw very little accessibility for Spanish speakers. So, on February 9th, we sent all of you a letter jointly from Buen Vecino and Adelante Comunidad Conejo, requesting that the General Plan information be translated into Spanish, and that interpreters be provided at community meetings. Since then, we've received several messages of outreach from city staff, several of whom are present here tonight, and we've seen a Spanish translation of the website go online. We can see that steps are being taken to make the General Plan update and the process of that update accessible to Spanish-speaking community members, to make more inclusive the public feedback to be heard as the course is set for the future of the city. We appreciate that. Thank you. And we appreciate the interpretation being provided at the council meeting tonight. The learning curve that's taking place is important and necessary. Thank you, and we encourage you to keep up this good work. The vision of Buen Vecino is to cultivate an environment where the inherent worth and dignity of every person is respected, where all are treated with compassion, have equal rights, and the opportunity to take part in our society. We welcome and value the immigrants in our community. We all share immigrant roots. Immigrants are integral to our economy and our development as a community. We embrace the growing diversity in the population and in the workforce in Thousand Oaks. We want the vision of our city's future to be consistent with our vision. We envision Thousand Oaks as a place that's welcoming and inclusive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Heather Swanson, followed by Rich, who will be on the telephone. Good evening. Heather Swanson? If Heather is not there, I will go to the next speaker, who will be on the telephone. Rich? Good evening, Rich. No, Rich? Perhaps we can go to, oh, that was it? Okay, phone takes a little bit longer, I'm told. And I'm reminding the public speakers to please mention to us where you live, not your street address, just the city. Rich? No, Rich? Okay, he is.
Are we there now?
Yes, I think we can hear you now, Rich.
I do so many Zooms, and I try to stay off the video. Anyway, I'm here, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm here to talk, to speak at the wireless water meters. Basically, after reading some documentation on it, it looks like it's premature, and also there's not enough information on it. Specifically, it's not approved by the PUC, at least that's my understanding, and also there is not a full proposal. What bothers me a little bit about it is that there are some, something like 200 homes in Ventura that's been installed, and it's almost like someone's saying, gee, it's easier to beg for forgiveness than it is for permission. That's, that's an issue. The other issue I'd like to address is the technology. Without the PUC approving it, I'm not so sure the technology has been investigated, specifically the accuracy, both the short-term accuracy and also the long-term accuracy of the flow meter. Considering that it's going to be the device that's going to determine my water bill, I have a right to know what it is. Is it installed on an existing meter, or is it a brand-new meter that goes in with some sort of transmitting device? Has it been calibrated, or does it need calibration periodically? And then my other question on it is power outage. What happens during a power outage? What happens during internet? Like, it's, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we had about a two-day power outage here, and what happens to the water flow? How was it calculated at that point? The other issue is I don't understand how it's going to reduce my water costs. It looks like it's going to be an expensive operation.
to be an expensive operation. Not only is, does something have to go into the house, but also there's got to be a device, devices located at various distances to transmit the data to some central location. That's not cheap, and it's not easily done. I've got a background in both internet technology and also in now flow, in low-level flow measurements. And this is not an easy technology, and I would definitely encourage the city of Thousand Oaks to investigate it. Make sure that it's verified, make sure it's proven, and make sure that we get what we're supposed to be buying, and it can be checked. And that's it. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you for your patience. Our next speaker is Dr. Karen Martin, also joining us by telephone, followed by Linda Carl via video, and then Tanya Fox via telephone. So, good evening, Dr. Martin.
Good evening. Thank you so much. This is going to be a little bit different. I'm here tonight to request consideration for a pilot project at Lynn and Janz that would utilize technology to calm traffic. I put cameras and decimeters to be installed at the intersection of Lynn and Janz to identify individuals with breaking speed and traffic. I intended to present this concept at the monthly traffic commission meeting, but it was canceled. I wasn't surprised, as they only had three meetings in 2020 and four in 2019. Hopefully, the infusion of new people will, will encourage a little bit more effort there. I moved to my current address in the 90s when there was the Lynn Road Commission. They thought the road noise was bad then. They compared it to a river. Since then, the type of traffic has changed. More heavy trucks and deliveries, more mobile planes, jets in Ontario, and increased helicopter traffic in the Las Robles. Now, it's more like a tsunami. I've been told by the traffic commission that a noise study required. They know it's bad. The chief of police told me there wasn't enough officers to patrol Lynn, the busiest north-south arterial area in the city. Most recently, I was told that racing, left turns on red, crosswalk violations, DUIs, and distracted driving were, quote, "driver and behavioral issues on which engineering proportions had limited influence." Pardon me if I disagree. Only two citations were written for exhaust noise in 2020. Since the city didn't have money to address my complaints, I was advised to plan a project locally, and mitigation would be provided by the developer. I contacted planning and learned of the health department's large unit at Las Robles. By some magic at the tax assessor office, I was not considered within 500 feet of the hospital, even though my lot is contiguous. Residents were promised the hospital health report got busy. It's a link to the trauma and stroke center. Appropriate studies would be done to evaluate the impact surrounding residential zones. The sound study did not include a vibrational study, nor did it include sound levels in the western flight path. Again, my lot. In fact, it stated the hospital was surrounded by a commercial zone. This council chose to pass the project with no mitigation. We were told Blackhawks would only land during extreme crisis. Perhaps someone could enlighten me on the catastrophic, catastrophic event that led to a Black Hawk landing on a too-small helipad at Las Robles last week. They blocked radar, but I have a visual record. I'm not trying to stop growth, the uncontrolled growth of cancer. You currently have two high-density projects, Lute's and Rubber Duck. They have required no mitigation for traffic. Soon, we will okay the lakes and the Pumpkin Patch. Pumpkin Patch Project, not hard to say. This will stress the already congested grid. Currently, Caltrans has given the 101 law park intersection a D rating. That's A, B, C, D. If you expect shrinking police force to continue to respond in five minutes, you need to support them by augmenting some of their duties so that they can, that can be interact electronically, or you will end up with a lack of load system, and more people will be harmed or die. I think technology provides a solution to the problem by freeing up the officers, a reminder to offenders that they need to behave, and provide a safer community for us all. Lynn and Janz would be a perfect test case. I think if the people that watch Tiger Woods accident today, maybe they will be looking into some of this, too. I understand that there aren't
Dr. Martin, I'm sorry, but you're, Dr. Martin, you are well over your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just reminding the public speakers that you have three minutes for public comments. Next speaker is Linda Carl. She's joining us via video, followed by Tanya Fox via telephone. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Linda Carl. I live in Thousand Oaks. I am a member of Thrive Leadership, one of the vice presidents of Adelante Comunidad Conejo, and part of the coalition of organizations working together on equity and inclusion in our city. We are Conejo Unido. My family had lived in the Conejo Valley for well over 30 years. Some of our children are adults who grew up here, and in spite of having what would be considered healthy incomes, can afford to live near us. I have grandkids, I can, whom I can establish close-knit bonds with due to distance constraints. At home, we still have younger children, one of which have intellectual and developmental disabilities. We love Thousand Oaks for its strategic location, the proximity to major healthcare centers. It's the place that we call home, and we wish all our kids will, too. As he was mentioned before, families who deal with inequalities like language barriers or disabilities also face financial difficulties, and my family is no strange to all of that. Our, our children, which are disabilities, most likely will outlive us, my husband and I. And then what? Where are they going to go? This is the place, the only place that they have known. What will be out there for them then? I don't expect my young, my older children to move in just for purpose of taking care of their younger, younger siblings. I would like to think that by that time, the city have considered those members of the communities and prepare for them and build the infrastructure that will provide them with, living with dignity within their community, the only place they know. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tanya Fox, joining us via telephone, followed by Amy Reed via video. And again, our speakers have three minutes, and please let us know in which city you live.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Fox. I live in, I've lived in Thousand Oaks Westlake for 21 years. I have EMF, electric magnetic field sensitivity. I have a computer desktop on an ethernet cord, not Wi-Fi to minimize my headaches, and it works for me. I'm asking the council to vote no on the AMR, AMI water meter. As a homeowner, I have opted out of my electric meter on my, on a house, on my home, so it's still on analog. I do not want to have an unreliable, untested, more expensive water meter on my home and all around me, and I'm sure many of my neighbors would agree. The second thing I would like to give input on is the drastic change to the general plan. I'm in favor of affordable housing. Rents are far too high for many in our city, not only TO, but all over the United States. So, I have no issue with turning the Kmart lot, for example, into apartments. However, the proposed 81,000 units of apartments for the city of Thousand Oaks is far too high. We already have a heavy traffic problem. There's congestion, there's accidents, and that Dr. Martin expounded, and so I would just ask you to reevaluate this plan. We definitely, I, we definitely need affordable housing. I would love to see my neighbors not crammed into a two-bedroom apartment, but I would love to see the affordable housing spacious and beautiful and not at the number that is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up via video, Amy Reed will be joining us, followed by Galen Talbot via telephone. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Amy Elias Reed, and I live in Newbury Park. I am speaking as a founding member of Buen Vecino, a grassroots community organization based in Thousand Oaks. And also, we are part of a coalition of community organizations, which you have heard about through other speakers. We are Conejo Unido. When I first moved to Thousand Oaks in 1973, I was not a child. I was impressed with the beauty and tranquility of this area, so I've stayed. I raised my three children, taught at Newbury Park High School for 36 years, and I've made lasting friendships here. My husband was a founding member of the First Conejo Valley Museum of Art, which was then located in the Janz Mall. I consider myself a native of this city. One of my first encounters with city planning occurred when the real estate agent who sold us our first home mentioned that she was speaking to the city council to petition for accessible walkways and ramps for wheelchair occupants. I remember there being a bit of a backlash because, really, how many people would be affected positively by tearing up streets to put those ramps in place? But those very people who needed the ramps persisted, and now no one thinks anything of them, other than that they are so convenient for us all to stroll down or ride our bikes or skateboards down, or even to spare the aging among us from having to step off the curb. And there is no doubt that the folks who use wheelchairs no longer have to struggle with what was a very difficult job of just getting around the city. That proved to me that it is possible to hear the needs of all of our neighbors, live, work, and share the Conejo Valley, and that it is possible to accommodate those needs. If we want Thousand Oaks to be a city that's welcoming and inclusive, then we have to make room at the planning table for everyone's voices to be heard. We started tonight by having the ability to listen to our Spanish-speaking neighbors, and we also, our neighbors who also need affordable housing, and our neighbors who have disabilities, both seen and unseen. Only then can we hope to build a community where everyone has a chance to thrive. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next by phone is Galen Talbot. I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, followed by Tim McCarthy on video. Good evening.
Am I up?
We can hear you. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Thank you so much, City Council, for hearing our voices, and thanks to Kristi also, who helped straighten some things out with being on the telephone as opposed to on video. I just want to say quickly, it was really nice to hear you cite the Pledge of Allegiance. I haven't heard that in quite some time this evening, so I appreciate that. My name is Galen Talbot, and my husband Renee and I have been residents of Thousand Oaks for over 35 years. I'd like to make a note for the record that I'm also here as a spokesperson for 15 of my fellow business owners who also own our commercial office building together in Westlake Village. I wanted to let them, let you know, what they've given me is that none of them were aware of this potentially unlawful transition to a new water meter system. They are unanimously opposed and are vehemently against the deployment of such. Also, they've expressed to me that their concerns about the total lack of customer communication or notification of any kind, for that matter. There has been no convincing rate case data that reflects sufficient or any cost savings to customers. In fact, what we do know is that in Northern California, signal malfunctions and unreliable readings have shown to be the cause of much higher bills. AMI, AMR makes claims that are just simply not true, and we should really investigate the Monterey examples. They have not reduced leaks. They are not a solution for water conservation. Their claims of the radiation impact, which harms our citizens, are false, as they do pulk constantly, not infrequently. CalAM has proven that they cannot be trusted. They have already blatantly just shown up in residential neighborhoods and claimed to residents that they were being forced to install the meters by the CPUC, when in fact, their actions were misrepresentations to customers, our citizens, as they had no authorization from CPUC. They have probably still been installed, I think they are still installing their meters regardless. I mean, how is this happening, and how many are there in Ventura County? This is probably unlawful at best, and Ventura County citizens reject the deployment, along with all of the expenses of AMI, AMR meters. Thousand Oaks City Council's own mission statement says, quote, "Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose," unquote. Not to reject this would be an extraordinary disservice to the citizens who voted for this council to represent us. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up via video, we have Tim McCarthy, followed via telephone, Audrey Bruckner. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Longtime listener, first-time caller. A couple of things I wanted to address. One of them is the homeless encampment that's located south of Janz Road, right off of the 23. There's a huge pile of trash that's building up. It's been going up for three or four weeks, and it doesn't seem like anybody is cleaning that area up. It's become a public health problem and a complete eyesore to the areas we come and go back from our daily living. On our city website, it says that Thousand Oaks will keep the area around the homeless area as clean as possible. I just want to call your attention to that area because it looks like it's, it's being missed. Item number two, I recall Councilmember Adams talking about a COVID relief fund that the city council might, might have of somewhere around 11 million. I don't know if those are exact numbers, but I recall some, some comments like that. And I don't remember seeing anything related to grants or opportunities for our local businesses to be able to, you know, take some of that money or get somebody or use it as low-interest loans so that fewer of us are going out of business. I know a lot of restaurants are struggling, and if, if we have some money put aside, it would be nice to offer that before it's too late. A small issue, just but the, the traffic lights from one side of town to the other side of town, and the synchron, syncing of those lights is ridiculous. It seems like we have to stop at every traffic light, wasting fuel, wasting our car, and if we're trying to improve on our carbon footprint, it seems like we're not helping ourselves out by not synchronizing our lights. And then finally, after looking at the agenda, I noticed American Water was on the agenda, so I also took research into that, like many of the other people that were on here today. And I can tell you that SCE and Solar have both been trying to put EMF and wireless meters on our houses. And our rates, even though in Thousand Oaks, we got rid of our grass and put on fake, fake greens, our water rates have continued to rise. Based on what's happened in Monterey County, the rates have gone up, even though AMR had said they would not. It seems like they are asking forgiveness. They're doing the work and then coming back and asking for the city to pay for their services. A couple of things. One, it goes against the PUC regulations. Two, the residents of Thousand Oaks have not, do not understand the risks and rewards related to the water meters of the EMF. That could possibly harm us with the radiation. And, and as a business, I vote definitely no to add those to businesses, just because there's been fewer complaints. So, I thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. You as well. Our next speaker is Audrey Bruckner, and she will be joining us by, by telephone. And then we have our remaining four Spanish speakers. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I live in Thousand Oaks. As a taxpaying citizen of this community for over 30 years, I want to go on public record as definitely not wanting a smart meter to monitor my water. These water meters also collect data, others' and daily water usage, and could possibly be used to assess social credit scores in the future. These meters emit EMFs or electromagnetic frequencies, which add to all the other radiation we are currently being bombarded with. It is troubling that the public was not informed of this switch. I believe we should be able to vote on such measures that can affect our health and pocketbook. American Water is a very large company with a global reach. It is not just restricted to Monterey County. It has contracted with other cities throughout our country and other countries as well. They have a problematical track record. I hope you have done thorough research on the experience of other cities before you subject our city to their abuse and misrepresentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Aydana Sierra Valdez, and she will be joining us via video with a Spanish interpreter. Good evening.
Buenas tardes, alcaldesa Vil de la Peña.
Good evening. Council Vil de la Peña, Mayor Vil de la Peña. My name is Alena Serra. I live in Newberry Park, and I'm here before you, city, as a member of the Unitarian Universalist of Conejo Valley, invited by gratitude and wembesino. I have lived in Newberry Park since I was two years old. This has been such a nice community to live here, raise children, go to a good school, have friends. But because of the collective stress we find ourselves in right now, which requires no explanation, I've noted the really difficult attitudes, resentment, hostility among my neighbors towards others. I've always been active in my community. I've always supported as volunteer at the community center board chart during the summer. I had an internship in Thousand Oaks during two years, and I met Luis. And I thought the choir of Newberry High School was at the graduation in 2020. I have been the honor of being awarded the knowledge, youth knowledge, by the supervisors of the county of Ventura because of my work with vulnerable patients that have no access to medical care. That community that is vulnerable to diabetes, cardiopathy, obesity, and others. I have had the opportunity to talk to these people, and they look like my family. I am so fortunate to be bilingual, and that's why I know the smell and the flavor of different cultures. Those diverse communities are the ones that have been forgotten and neglected unfairly by other people that are more fortunate. I've always had the vision of an inclusive and respectful community, a place where we can build together a longer table to share our abundance. But that vision needs to get started with us, where we're stronger together. If we want Thousand Oaks to be the city that welcomes and includes everyone, we have to open the space at the dialogue of our tables so people can be heard, and all of us could have the opportunity to thrive together. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we were going a little bit too fast for the other interpreter.
This is your interpreter? And yes, it would have been, I was trying to tell the speaker to pause so we could render our interpretation. So I took notes, and this is, I will attempt to do the best we can.
This is not easy, so I appreciate your patience. I did simultaneous translation myself many, 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 many years ago. And you do need the speaker to pause for at least a little bit. So, but my simultaneous translation was German-Spanish. So we are going to our next speaker, also Spanish.
I can tell you what she, what she said.
We heard what she said.
In Spanish or in English?
In English. We have another translator who was translating simultaneously as she spoke.
Oh, great.
So, yes. Next speaker, Spanish-speaking as well. We'll need, in fact, the last three will need a translator. So if the translator or interpreter could please let the speaker know to speak slowly or to pause after each sentence so that the other interpreter can catch up. And the next one we have.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt. This is interpreter. We're interpreting simultaneously, and we will continue to do so.
Yes. Okay, no, no, I understand that there is simultaneous translation. But I think there was another translator that was maybe, okay, I'm not sure. I'm getting some information.
Mayor, Mayor Vil de la Peña, if I might really quickly, just for clarity, there are two translators they had to have. Based on the way this works, you have to have an overlap and a break within there. So there are two translators. Just wanted to let you know that.
Correct. So there are two. We now have Bartola Cachi, followed by Eulalia Soriano. And our last speaker will be Evelyn Guerrero. Good evening. So Bartola Cachi would be next.
Bartola Cachi. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear the translator.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bartola. I reside in Newberry Park. I have three children, and the reason I'm speaking to you is because I need the information in Spanish. Not certain things in Spanish, but everything in Spanish. I have felt, I have been made to feel badly. I have wanted to get involved in things that are important to my life and for my children. But unfortunately, I have not been able because of the lack of English. I want to know in Spanish how things are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias a usted.
We will answer questions at the end of our public speakers. Next up, we have Eulalia Soriano. Good evening. I know she's there. I can see her. Eulalia, go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Eulalia Soriano. De la ciudad de Tausanos y de la comunidad Conejo adelante. Aquí estoy para hablar acerca de que a nuestra comunidad latina no tuviera ciertas debajo recursos. Soy madre solita. Ah, tengo cuatro niños.
Con permiso, con permiso, un momento, por favor. We're waiting for the translator.
Donde nos tuvimos que salir de emergencia porque no era.
Where we had to leave as an emergency?
There you are. Thank you.
I was almost homeless, but thank God my daughter rented an apartment. But to be able to pay rent, I have to rent to other people. And I would like there to be homes that are affordable for low-income people. Thank you.
Okay, gracias a usted. And our final speaker is going to be via telephone, I believe, Evelyn Guerrero.
I live in one room. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Guerrero. I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm renting one room. I live with my daughters. I am a single mother. And I don't feel okay because I live around five men, and I go to work, and it's only me and my daughters. So I would like to see if there is any help out there so I could have a safe place for my daughters and me. Thank you and good night.
Muchas gracias. This concludes our final speaker and public comment section. Thank you very much to the interpreters. This certainly isn't easy. This was our first night attempting this. I really appreciate everyone's patience. And it's also very good to see the many different faces that live with us in our community. And we will now go to our city manager, Drew Powers, as well as our city attorney, Tracy Noonan. They will respond to some of the issues that were raised. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you so much, Mayor Vil de la Peña. And just at the outset, thank you to all of our speakers, and thank you for the patience of the viewing audience. Just so everyone knows, we do have accommodations that are available a whole variety of ways for people that request them. And we did receive a request yesterday for Spanish-language translation. And we worked to provide that this evening. Unfortunately, in a virtual world, Zoom doesn't make it that easy. And there's a whole variety of reasons that I will spare you the details of. But we actually reached out to them already earlier today asking for some modifications in their software platform that we think are going to help not just us, but other jurisdictions when they have similar issues. So I'm confident that our, I'm confident that our next opportunity to provide something like this, we will be able to do it even better. So just a few comments based on the commentary this evening. We do have a number of speakers that spoke on the topics of equity and inclusion. And I want to remind everyone that the city council will be taking up a study session on the environmental justice and social equity element of our general plan. And that will be held on Tuesday, the 16th of March, and encourage any and all with interest in that item to mark that date on your calendars for participation. Also heard just a few things that I want to mention. There was a comment about homeless encampment, and we were aware that we got a request of that effect, and we have notified Caltrans. That's Caltrans property. So Caltrans is responsible for cleanup on that. So TOPD will be working in coordination with them to manage that issue. Question about business grants. You may remember that we did, the city did issue a series of business grants and rental assistance grants. The county is currently in the process of a very large $20 million business grant program. So anyone that's interested, that's a great resource. And our Chamber of Commerce continues to advocate and help in that regard. There was also a comment made, I just want to make sure I pointed it out by one of the speakers, about our general plan accommodating 81,000 new units of housing. And I just wanted to make sure I clarified that for the record. 81,000 is our total capacity as a community, and that includes all of the current built environment today. So certainly, nothing of that order of magnitude is being discussed or contemplated. And I think City Attorney Tracy Noonan has a couple of additional comments.
Thank you. So just a couple of comments. With respect to comments on the CalAM closed-session agenda item, just wanted to make sure the public has some good information. First of all, CalAM is actually a private water purveyor in Newberry Park. They service residents and commercial businesses in the Newberry Park area. It is not affiliated or controlled by the city of Thousand Oaks. Ultimately, the California Public Utilities Commission is the actual decision-making body on any and all applications by CalAM for any rate adjustments. And it's not the city that makes that decision. It's actually the state PUC. We do have additional information on the CalAM rate adjustment request that was filed with the PUC. It's on our city website, and you can get information from the website. With respect to a comment on a lawsuit against the city, I believe the speaker is referring to a lawsuit filed against the city for its approval of a wireless facility. That lawsuit was dismissed by the Ventura County Superior Court, but it is my understanding that the plaintiff in that case has filed an appeal of that dismissal, and it's currently pending on appeal. And that's it.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to the consent calendar. Do my colleagues have any questions regarding the consent calendar? Anything that you would like to pull out? And if not, then I would look for a motion.
Move the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Adam and a question, I believe, by Councilmember McNamee.
I'd like to pull A, please.
7A, okay.
Move the balance.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please ready the vote?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Vil de la Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now go to Councilmember McNamee for item 7A.
Could someone on city staff please explain what 7A consists? I've had a number of people ask me the question as to what it is. If you could go into a little more detail, the public is asking.
I think I will step in with that one, Councilmember McNamee. Jamie Boscarino, the city's finance director. Item 7A is our ratification of demands. So it's just a listing of all of the city vendor payments that we have made. We also include this listing of vendor payments on the city's website in the Finance Department under their financial information. So a listing of all the vendor payments that we've made is included on our website, public information. And this is just council's approval of all of our vendor payments.
Thank you. Can we move 7A then?
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember McNamee moves to approve 7A. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Vil de la Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. We don't have any public hearings today, so we will go straight to item number 9A, which is the residential capacity allocation for One Baxter Way in the Westlake area of Thousand Oaks. And this will be kicked off by our city manager, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Vil de la Peña. I'll be very brief, but I felt it was important after reading a few emails today just to state what I've stated a number of times in the last couple of months here. And that is that we are having a series of proposals that are being considered by the city council. These are not city-driven proposals. These are proposals from property owners or developers that are following the city's process. And they file an application fee, and they go through that process. So we have the responsibility to bring it forward and through to the council. Now, there's a reason that we're seeing many of them right now. And that is, as I said back in December and earlier in January, that with the general plan on the horizon, to give the city council the maximum opportunity to shape and control any project, should they decide that housing is warranted on a particular site or worth taking a look at, now is the time to do that. They're never going to have more control. You're never going to have more control as a city council than this time right now. So for those concerned that this is a run on development in our city, a lot of these have been in discussion for a very long time. Kennedy Wilson has considered half a dozen different types of proposals on their site through the years. So the one that is here for you this evening is the latest iteration under the revised pre-screen process the council adopted back in December. We do anticipate two more prescreens to be coming in the next month or so. One of them from Amgen for a piece of property that they own, and another smaller site that's, I believe, on Movie Court. So, and then those will be the final two before we move into the more deep general plan discussion. Just wanted to make that point and that clarification at the outset, and I'll pass it over to the community development staff for the presentation. Thanks so much.
Give me one second. Thank you.
This will be presented by senior planner Carlos Contreras, and we will have our community development director, Mr. Calvin Parker, available for questions later on, along with our staff from Public Works.
Give me one second. I'm getting the PowerPoint together here. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council and members of the public. The project before you tonight is a request to allocate residential capacity and initiate a general plan amendment to allocate 240 residential units for a multifamily residential concept to be located at One Baxter Way. The request consists of the following. Initiate the general plan amendment for Measure E allotment of 240 residential units, allow concurrent processing of entitlement applications in conjunction with legislative actions. In this case, legislative actions include the allocation of the units. And also evaluate the multifamily residential concept based on the new simplified pre-screen criteria adopted by the city council in December of 2020. As you may be aware, the pre-screen process essentially serves as a tool to allocate the requested 240 Measure E units that are being requested tonight. So what is the pre-screen process? It's an evaluation of a proposed concept against adopted city council criteria and a required step to allocate the requested Measure E units. The current refined pre-screen process calls for a conceptual level review based on land use to determine whether the site should be allocated units and in this case, a multifamily residential concept requesting the 240 Measure E units. Please note that tonight's action is not approving the project, just allowing the concept to proceed with the review and evaluation process associated with the submittal of a formal application. Also, this action does not guarantee the project will be approved during formal review as the project will be further evaluated and considered by the planning commission and the city council. The applicant has 12 months to submit the formal application. And it should be known that the project may be modified between now and then. Projects get further refined to meet city development standards, codes, and policies. Here's the review process. It's provided graphically to better illustrate where the project stands today. These are the many steps in the planning and development process. Today, we are in the yellow category, which is a pre-screen. This is the very initial step of the process. If the requested 240 units are allocated, the next step is a pre-application, which includes a development agreement to iron out development standards and other project specifics. And thereafter, the environmental analysis for sequel compliance. At the end of the process, the planning commission would review and evaluate the project, hold public hearings, and make a recommendation on the proposal to the city council, which would then hold a public hearing and take final action on the proposal. Again, should the city council allocate the units tonight, the council will get another opportunity to reevaluate the proposal for final consideration. So the initial step in the review process, which is referred to as the pre-screen. As previously mentioned, this is a required step for the allocation of the units. The process adopted by council this past December involves the evaluation of the design concept according to predefined criteria. The criteria outline here serves to determine whether the concept before you tonight warrants the allocation of the requested 240 Measure E units. This process allows the council to comment on the concept as its components early in this evaluation process. The evaluation criteria detailed in the staff report is as follows. Project setting, that is the concept designed based on the proposed location. The quality of the concept plan. Regional housing needs assessment, that is affordable units that are going to be proposed. And finally, the concept features that are provided for community benefit. As part of the design concept, the 42.9 acre parcel would be divided into two lots. One lot would be 34.1 acres and the other at 8.8 acres. The 8.8 acre lot will serve as a site for the multifamily residential concept. The concept consists of three total buildings, of which one is a parking structure. The applicant is requesting 240 Measure E units. However, based on the 8.8 acres, the total allocation is for 264 Measure E units because 8.8 acres at 30 units to the acre gives you 264. As such, there would be an overallocation of 24 units. Of the 240 units that are going to be proposed, 29 would be affordable units. Here's the aerial of the subject property in its current condition. The site consists of one 42.9 acre parcel outlined in red and is located within a developed area of the city, north of the 101 freeway and south of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The site supports various protected, protected oak and sycamore trees. However, impacts of these protected trees are not specifically known at this time. It is too early in the review process for the submittal of technical studies. And the new pre-screen process, which was adopted by city council last December, does not require a tree report or any other technical study at this time. However, city policies require evaluation of projects in an effort to protect and preserve these trees. A tree report, which will include tree impacts, work methods, monitoring, and protection standards will be required as the project moves forward. Should the council allocate the units with the formal application, technical studies will be required, including a tree report, traffic study, among others. Here you have a photograph of the subject property looking northeast from the 101 freeway. As you can see here, in, in the red is the existing industrial office building. And you can see that there is existing mature landscaping just, just north of the freeway, which creates, which creates a buffer between the freeway and the existing industrial office building. Here's another photograph of the subject property, looking at it from the 101 freeway, looking towards the north. Again, I demonstrate here and I put an arrow for the existing industrial office building. The building will not be demolished as part of this proposed project. That existing landscape area will remain undisturbed. The multifamily, the residential multifamily buildings would be located beyond, to the northwest of this existing industrial office building. Here's the proposed concept. As I previously mentioned, the 42.9 acre parcel will be divided into two, two actual parcels. The 8.8 acre parcel for the multifamily development is demonstrated here in the dashed black lines. Primary vehicle access is provided from South Lakeview Canyon Road. And the main access driveway shown here in red provides interior access for both the existing office building and the proposed multifamily development. It should be noted that an existing bridge provides vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle connectivity to the promenade shopping center to the west. As shown here, the concept involves two multifamily residential buildings outlined in purple and are located on the northern portion of the site and the front Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon Road. The parking structure shown in green is located at the rear and, and western portion of the site. Although the, the parking garage will serve both the industrial office use and the proposed residential use, the concept includes additional parking within the residential component of the concept. Parking supply will be determined by parking required for the existing industrial office use and the total number of residential u- units provided in the proposed concept, which will be based on standards contained in the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and also state law. Furthermore, any existing surface parking to be removed to accommodate the project will be replaced via the parking structure. As far as the proposed location and surrounding land uses, as shown here, the proposed residential buildings will be located in the area outlined by the pink dash circle. And the parking structure will be located in the area indicated by the orange rectangle. Surrounding land uses consist of industrial office uses to the east and the south, a school site to the northeast, open space to the north, and the promenade at Westlake to the west. Various job opportunities are available to residents at the promenade, which provides a variety of services that include but are not limited to food, grocery, entertainment, professional offices, personal services, and other retail uses. Additionally, the site is near several bus stops. And as indicated here in the blue circles, the bus stops are within approximately half a mile from the site. Nearby public transit provides service connections to the Thousand Oaks Transit Center. Also, bicycle lanes exist along Thousand Oaks Boulevard and along South Lakeview Canyon Road. As proposed, the concept includes public and private green space and pedestrian pathways throughout the property, including outdoor seating and courtyards demonstrated here in orange. The concept includes a clubhouse and a gym outlined in yellow, which will serve the, which will serve to provide opportunities for residents to gather on this, on the site. The concept includes two rooftop terraces as shown in the purple rectangles. These rooftop terraces overlook the pool, which is highlighted and indicated in blue. The other design components include several pedestrian paths and, and a bridge, while incorporating existing trees and landscaping into the design for enjoyment by the residents of the development. The concept will serve the community in general in that access will be provided from pathways that provide improved connectivity to both the existing shopping center to the west and office use to the south. As far as regional housing needs, 240 units will be counted toward satisfying the city's sixth arena cycle allocation requirement for the period of 2021 to 2029. This cycle includes 733 very low and 493 low income units. To illustrate Ventura County's income limits, the table here demonstrates the two-person annual household income within the very low income category, which is at $45,200 and within the low income category at $72,300. Of the 240 units that are going to be, be proposed under this concept, 12% or rather 29 would be affordable units at the very low and low income categories. Of those 29 affordable units, 16 are very low and 13 are low income. As far as the next steps, if the city council approves a request tonight, the applicant will then revise the project plans based on the comments that are provided tonight and then submit a pre-application. After the, after that, the applicant will need to submit a formal application on or before February 23rd of 2022. Formal applications include but are not limited to a general plan amendment, a specific plan, a development permit, a special use permit, land division, and protected tree permits, et cetera. Staff would like to note that through the formal review process, other city departments and agencies will be required to review the project and provide recommendations, conditions, and approval. The formal application would then require review and approval by both the planning commission and the city council. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council provide direction to either one, adopt a resolution to initiate a general plan amendment to allocate the 240 units that are being requested tonight and allow concurrent processing, or deny the application for the allocation of the 240 units. This concludes staff's presentation and I am available for questions. And also Calvin Parker, community development director is available and Steve Kerns, planning manager, are available.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We can now go to questions before we go to the applicant. Mr., or Councilmember McNamie, you go ahead.
I'd like to get clarification. Could you tell me what the state's minimum parking spaces to qualify for approval for a studio, one bedroom, and two bedroom?
Do you, you mean, you, you want the parking requirements for understate SB 1818?
My understanding, I, I just want to clarify, like a one bedroom is 1.6 parking spaces. I just want to review that, studio, one bedroom, and two bedroom. And whatever the state says is a minimum that we must have for such development.
Councilman, if I may, this is Calvin Parker, director of community development. Under SB 18, this, 1818, the state requires one parking space per studio and one bedroom unit, two parking spaces for two and three bedroom units, and two and a half spaces for four bedrooms and up. However, that's not being considered as part of tonight's project. That'll be evaluated if the project moves on in the process. This is simply a review of the concept and if the use is appropriate for the site.
I appreciate the clarification and giving me those numbers. Reason why for my question is that the last two projects that have been proposed, I'm having difficulty justifying at my mind's eye, but still greenlighting one of them in that the parking is inadequate if they go with the state minimum, which again would be greenlighted through as far as meeting state standards. However, I don't think that's what our standard is here in Thousand Oaks, in my opinion. Because if we don't have enough parking on the site, people will start parking on the street, which again leads to congestion, traffic safety issues, and so forth. So I just want to make that on the record so people listening in can remember your recollection and account of what the parking is from the state and how that needs to be addressed in the final approval process. Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any of my colleagues.
My little hand is up.
Oh, yes, it is. I see it now. Go ahead, Mr., Mr. Adam.
Thank you very much. As we all know, the project is directly contiguous with, with the promenade, which is, in my opinion, one of the premier gathering spots in the city of Thousand Oaks. And it's connected by, I guess you'd kind of call like a little bridge between the promenade and the, and the proposed project. Has there been any, any talk about enhancing the connection between the two properties, the promenade and, and One Baxter? As far as either, I don't know, widening that bridge or creating another connection somewhere down the, down the road there?
If I may, councilman? That's something that has been evaluated by the applicant. And they can speak a little bit more to that point when they have an opportunity to speak. But it is something that staff has raised and they have looked at as part of the project up until this point.
All right, I'll, I'll check with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. We had the pictures from the freeway showing the viewscape as you're coming down, coming down the road there. The parking structure moves into that area more or less. Is the viewscape going to change with the parking structure there? Have you evaluated that with your, with the, with the builder? Or should we wait until that moment when we have them on?
Staff has conducted preliminary site assessment and evaluation. As that photograph demonstrated, there is steep slopes immediately south of the existing industrial office building. We, we don't have a detailed visual impact analysis, which will be provided at a future date if the units are allocated tonight. That would be part of the, the formally evaluation, visual impacts from the 101 freeway. But at this time, we, we don't, we don't know the, the full height of the parking structure. And we, we understand that the current site conditions have mature landscaping along the 101 and also steep slopes. So that may create more of a buffer as far as visual impacts are concerned.
And just a quick second question. I, again, I can ask the, the proposal people for this as well. But the, I noticed in the staff report that we're talking about 29 additional housing, affordable housing, workforce housing units. You've mentioned in the staff report that they are not asking for a density bonus. Have they indicated to you why they are going with the affordable units and not asking for the density bonus?
Councilman, I'll, I'll take that. At this point, the applicant is providing affordable units commensurate with the community benefit that's required of this process. They believe at this point that they can provide the project without asking for additional units at this time. But that's definitely something you can follow up with the applicant when they have additional time to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? None? Okay. I do have a quick question. I was reading in the, in the Acorn about a traffic study and the number of trees. But there was no traffic study attached to this, nor any details about the trees. And I was wondering if staff could clarify that?
Yes. If I may, the Acorn article was based on a project that was under review from 2019 that had different submittal and review criteria for city council at that time. As you all are well aware, the city council updated their criteria in December of 2020. This project and concept under- This project and concept under review tonight is based on a criteria that was established that night in December of 2020. And it's simply a concept, and it's slightly different than what was reviewed back in 2019, the project that staff had. Based on the concept that we have, the project is going to change and continue to be refined as it continues to move through the process it greenlit tonight. Based on that, any technical studies, specifically a tree report, will have to be based on the final project design, which we don't have at this time, so it would be premature to include that at this point. But that's definitely was information provided by the applicant in the Acorn, and they could address that further if necessary when they have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Mr. Parker, was the project two years ago larger or smaller in its presentation or application?
I believe it was located in slightly different areas on the lot. The tree impacts at that time will likely be different than what we experienced here this evening. The exact number of units I do not recall, but the applicant may have that on hand.
Okay. The question I have is, obviously, it is right across from a very busy high school that also uses fireworks, and there is a lot of traffic congestion and drop off time with yet another high school nearby. Should I direct that question to the applicant, Mr. Parker? Or should I, do you have any idea as to how much traffic could be impacted?
It's premature at this point to discuss specifically in terms of the traffic study the project may cause, just because CEQA is going to be based on the final project. And as previously mentioned, we're still going through the review and design process. So the project is likely to change several times between now and formal submittal. So the traffic studies will be based on a formal application, which we won't get to unless they're greenlit this evening. But as you aptly pointed out, the applicant may have additional information that they can share when they have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, very good. If there are no questions, Mr. Jones, are you trying to say something? Go ahead.
Based on the question you just asked, is it possible to limit traffic usage? In other words, really, based on what the mayor said, I was thinking about, because I live not too far from there. And in the morning, if you try to drive easterly on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, anywhere near Lakeview Canyon, it's really a madhouse because of all the kids going to school. And then after 3:30, when they're coming out, it's the same situation. My question is, is it possible to limit the direction that people can use when they leave the parking lot of this proposed project? Can you direct them? Is it legal to direct them to the south on Lakeview Canyon at those times of day? Maybe take Merida over to Thousand Oaks Boulevard instead of going down to the corner of Lakeview and Thousand Oaks Boulevard? Is that legally possible?
That's a question that's going to require slight technical expertise. So as the mayor mentioned before we started this item, we have public works staff here this evening. And for a response, I'm going to defer to them on that.
Yes, because I'd hate to introduce more traffic around 7:30 in the morning or 3:30 in the afternoon at the intersection of Lakeview and Thousand Oaks. That's the reason I asked it.
Yes, Councilmember Jones, this is Cliff Finley, the Director of Public Works. I'll try to answer your question. First off, as part of this review process, once the applicant has submitted an application, it will be reviewed, the impacts will be reviewed, and mitigation to those impacts will be recommended. That's what the traffic study is for. We have not done that traffic study to date. To answer your question, whatever mitigations are required can be imposed. So I don't know that that would be to necessarily. I don't know that I've seen, usually whenever we limit turns, it's for safety reasons. But there may be other mitigations that could be added, and we'll come out of that traffic study when it is completed.
Yeah, I was trying to think in the past if I've ever been on a council or other board where we did that. I know that we've had some conditioning that was unusual at times. But it would seem to me that if we legally couldn't condition it, could the applicant agree to doing it? Or is that considered not kosher?
So again, at this point, and I would, or Councilmember Jones, I would not know for sure until actually that traffic study is completed. And this is a development agreement. There's all kinds of mitigations that might be brought up, and we'll see what comes out of that traffic study once we actually have a project, if you greenlight this tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Councilmember McNamie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move 9A residential capacity allocation and initiation of general plan amendment for a project located at One Baxter Way.
Actually, we do have to hear from the applicant and probably about 20 speakers this evening.
Wow. I'll hold that motion then.
Yes, please hold that thought. I do have a question for Mr. Parker, actually, Mr. Finley. Have you ever had a high-density project where the applicant was not able to mitigate the traffic and therefore the project was denied?
Mayor, if I can begin to answer that question?
Go ahead.
If there's a, under CEQA, if there's a traffic impact that cannot be mitigated, there is the possibility to request a statement of overriding consideration to weigh the benefits of the project versus the impacts that are caused with that. However, that's a decision that would have to be made by council at that time, and the applicant wouldn't get to that point unless the project is allowed to move forward this evening.
And if I could just expand on that, under the California Environmental Quality Act, projects cannot be approved if there are environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated unless the city council adopts a statement of overriding consideration.
Yes, I think we've, in my years on the council, I think we've only done that once before, and I forget for which case. Okay, we will now go to our, to the applicant. You have 15 minutes, and the applicant, I believe, will be Mr. Dave Eadie and Tom Cohen. Good evening. And also, just wanted for the public, we do have the ex parte communication in the supplemental packet for those council members who met with the applicant. Good evening, Mr. Eadie and Mr. Cohen.
Eadie, your microphone's not on.
Yes, now it is. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry. Basically, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Kennedy Wilson and provide you with a brief history of our involvement with this property. Kennedy Wilson's principal activities involve real estate investment, development, and construction, with particular emphasis in the development and management of multifamily communities. As such, we remain involved in our communities. That's an important point, I think. We own and manage over 30,000 multifamily units across the Western US, the United Kingdom and Ireland, including award-winning communities recognized for excellence in design, construction, operation, and sustainability. We purchased the property at One Baxter Way in 2006. And as Carlos mentioned, the 42.9 acre property contains a large office building together with over 1,200 surface parking spaces. The 240 homes proposed for Gateway do not include the use of a density bonus, nor at 27.3 dwelling units per acre does it seek the highest density presently allowed in the city. Accordingly, the project draws more lately from your Measure E bank, which is a finite resource. And for several years, we've been studying the demand for additional housing in the city, particularly as it relates to fulfilling the needs of companies and employers who are based here in town. And of course, the city's clearly stated need for the addition of workforce and affordable housing. We explored the realistic possibility of adding a housing component because this property is a sizable parcel. And as such, there is more than sufficient space to accommodate additional uses of the land while retaining ample open space. And while several residential proposals are being considered along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, ours is, to our knowledge, the only residential project to the east end of the Boulevard, thus achieving a certain balance in the placement of some residential units in this part of the community. The alternative land use maps presently being considered by the General Plan Advisory Committee designate the Oaks with a residential component. I know that's preliminary, but the Oaks is hidden from view by existing vegetation on its perimeter, as Carlos said. Freeway access is convenient, but not in such close proximity to where these units would be. They would be over 1,000 feet from the freeway. So environmental concerns are somewhat less. We believe and hope you'll agree that this site possesses key attributes uncommon for a single property that contribute to the real prospects of creating a campus-like setting where residences and jobs, such as, as well as shopping and dining opportunities, can be sensibly integrated and available within walking distance. During the past few years, much thought and analysis has gone into evaluating what might be most appropriate, the form and type of housing that would be successful at the Oaks. Personally, I've been involved with this for six years. We've had numerous discussions with city departments, including the City Manager's Office and the Community Development Department regarding various housing concepts. And with that said, however, we come before you tonight with an understanding that the goal of the new prescreen process is to provide general information regarding project design along with basic project statistics designed to document that the gateway meets the objectives of the city in a macro sense. The staff has provided an excellent summary for you, including information documenting conformity with the prescreen evaluation factors. And therefore, I won't be repetitive and will rather focus on summarizing the benefits associated with the project, which we believe demonstrate that it merits the requested Measure E allocation and is deserving of initiation of the general plan amendment, which of course would involve a full analysis of the project, including environmental review. Now, project benefits associated with the gateway include provision of 29 affordable units, 16 of which will be for very low-income residents, and 13 of which will be for low-income residents. This equates to 12% of the gateway homes. The provision of these affordable homes will be an extraordinary public benefit, and it'll greatly aid the city's compliance with RENA impositions. The remaining homes at Gateway are also workforce housing, that is to say, housing that can be reasonably afforded by people who have moderate to middle incomes and is in proximity to workforce centers. Another public benefit is our commitment to designing and constructing the project with green building standards that exceed the Cal Green building standards. A goal of Gateway is to properly integrate the buildings to the existing site and to achieve a sustainable project that will be certified to a LEED standard. Also, we'll provide recreational and amenity spaces for the future residents of Gateway to encourage social interactions and outdoor living. Additionally, providing for greater connectivity between our property and the Promenade to the West will encourage a pedestrian-friendly way of life, providing pedestrian and cycling connections to that site. The goal is to provide a place where one can live, shop, work, all without using a car. And I should pause for a minute here and read a short letter from the Caruso folks, the owners of the Promenade at Wesley. I got this letter from Corinne Verdery, who's their chief development officer. And she states, Dear Dave, thank you for sharing Kennedy Wilson's vision of adding a multifamily component to the Oaks office complex in the city of Thousand Oaks. Caruso fully supports your proposal that will add residential units to the city's housing stock at a time when housing is so greatly needed. We're pleased with the potential of having a new residential community in proximity to the services we provide at the Promenade at Wesley and look forward to working closely with you in the coming months to further refine design elements of the project. In particular, we agree with KW's goal of providing greater auto, bicycle, and pedestrian connectivity between the two sites to ensure that these properties function in the true sense of a live-work environment. Again, we support the addition of this housing and are happy to work with you toward its success. I guess, and finally, the public benefits from the property being screened from the surrounding area is substantial. As I stated, the project, buildings are over 1,000 feet from the freeway, and the density of the hundreds of onsite trees that screen the views into the property from Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon Road is substantial and actually has been augmented with over 2,500 plants recently to fill in voids that died from the droughts in past years. In addition to reaching out to the business community, we've been and will remain in contact with the four closest residential communities, including Westlake Hills, Country Club Estates, Hidden Canyon, and Stony Brook Townhomes, all of which are over 2/3 of a mile from our property. It's literally one of the few remaining properties in the city which can provide quality housing without disturbing existing neighborhoods. And it's noted that we fully understand that a favorable action tonight by the city council doesn't mean in any way that the project's approved or whether it will be approved after the full planning and environmental review process. So again, we look forward to working with staff and continuing to reach out to the community as we proceed forward. And in closing, I'd like to affirm with you that wherever Kennedy Wilson sets about to possibly reshape land with a development, we are ever mindful of local issues and concerns. In essence, and I've said this before to other municipalities, even though we own property, we always consider ourselves a guest whose integrity will be judged by our level of care and stewardship of the land. So at this time, I can answer those questions that were raised by various council members or stand ready to take any questions you may have, along with Tom Cohen, who's on this team.
Thank you, Mr. Eadie. Why don't you go ahead and answer a couple of the questions that my colleagues posed just a few minutes ago?
Sure, happy to do that.
One was traffic, then parking, and then, Mr. Adam, you also had a question?
Yes.
Yeah, I did. Your property is, I believe, very fortunate to be next to the promenade, which, as I mentioned earlier, one of the premier gathering spots, if not the premier gathering spot in the city of Thousand Oaks. Tell me, have your plans gone far enough to tell us a little bit about how you would enhance the connection between the two properties? I think right now, there's really just like a little bridge that connects the two.
Yes, Councilman Adam, there is a bridge. It's not real narrow. It's a two-lane bridge with, I think, sidewalk on one side and railing, of course. And to answer your question, in the past several months, I've met with the Caruso people, and we've talked about what might become of that access point as well as better connectivity by way of possibly restriping or redirecting traffic on both sites. Caruso has an open mind. They, of course, don't want to get into details at this very conceptual stage. But they've been very amenable to improving the whole access experience, if you will. So that would be something in store for the next steps if we get to go forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eadie. Yeah, I could see a real synergy between the two properties. Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Okay, and then we had questions from Mr. Engler, I believe, and Councilmember McNamie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Eadie. Mr. Eadie, I was wondering, you know, that particular site Mr. Eadie, I was wondering, you know, that, that particular site has a lot of potential, and I recognize it has a lot of potential. One question I had is the 29 units that you're moving forward with as far as affordable workforce housing and the juxtaposition of your density bonus that may come into play. Are you, are you, I'm still a little confused as to why you wouldn't call for a density bonus. Is this something that Kennedy Wilson does in response to communities, or what, what is your motivation for that?
Well, the motivation, I think, is probably on several prongs here. One is, you know, to balance the site costs and what the project looks like, keeping in mind the number of stories is a, always a concern, and what the whole envelope of the project looks like. And that changes as you increase units. So we felt we struck a good balance here as far as, with the expectation of meeting the various development regulations and not going too high with the property buildings. I don't know how high they'll be, but I don't think they will be visible from freeway or the adjacent streets. But by that nature, it does, you know, place a limit perhaps on how many units we build. The other thing is, is when we looked at this from the standpoint of Mejory Bank that is quickly diminishing, we thought, well, let's, let's not be real greedy. Frankly, let's do something that is kind of middle of the road. So it's, it's not a great answer, but it's essentially driven by site constraints, costs, and not wanting to, if it's those two things that are, you know, basically drivers, let's not go for more units unless we hear from you tonight, for instance, that you want many more units, which will necessarily mean we'll have to be a lot more flexible in what we can build on the property, because I would expect we would only be able to go up to do that. So there's a balance there, to answer your question, along the way.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that you're, you're just looking at the 29 units. That's, that's laudable, I believe. I just want to tag along a little bit with my colleague. That particular site seems to be a, a site that has a village potential with the Caruso property to the west, the existing office buildings, offices across the street, high school across the way. I would, I would encourage you, and I hope you can give us a little more detail on how you're going to integrate all those, those types of things so that we can have a community where people really don't have to get out of their car. And, you know, our, our biggest issue with greenhouse gases is our transportation. If we can facilitate something where we have people who are not using their cars very often, that, that is helpful. If you'd like to elucidate that a little bit, and then on that, on top of that, since we're talking about cars, this is an area that's already impacted with vehicles. I don't mean for you to get into your specific ways of mitigating it, but are you aware that there will be mitigation that needs to be done?
Councilman Engler, to answer your second question first, I'm well aware that there would be mitigations if indeed impacts were identified. The first question is kind of along the lines that you were intimating, and that is, with a live-work, dine, shop environment that we're trying to create here, where people have the ability to walk across the street to Amgen or to work in the one backstreet way, the Oaks Building, or what have you, I suspect that the traffic study that would be undertaken will recognize that as a diminution of vehicle miles traveled, which is the standard you use in the city for your trip counts. So that land use proposal that we have in and of itself is user-friendly toward traffic issues. And I would also add, you know, and again, and you're gonna have to look at a total report to accept this idea, but the, a traffic report would identify that traffic movements, if you will, are, are different between these land uses that are adjacent to us as well as, as well as ours. You know, people are coming and going at different times, and that's what a good traffic report will do, is to point out what, if any, impacts there are, and then we would deal with it then, hopefully.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have what I would say is a, what an artist would have is a blank canvas to create a beautiful piece of art. You have some wonderful acreage there to do some magic things there with the development. The opportunity is tremendous. My two questions I have for you, one is, again, as I raised earlier, was the parking, even though the state allows fewer than what I would consider to be adequate, is your company open to having more parking, for example, two parking spaces for one bedroom, two spaces for a studio, as compared to the state minimum? The second is that we have Westlake High School across the street, and it's getting tougher and tougher for not only staff, but also the teachers to afford to live in Thousand Oaks. Any possible consideration that you could make for the faculty and staff there at the high school to live and reside at that location where they could walk directly across the street to go to work?
Councilman McNamie, I think the first, the question, your first, the answer to your first question is, you know, I think we'd have to see what the design's going to look like as it evolves through the process, once we, if we get approval through to start tonight, because it's, it kind of goes back to the earlier question about, you know, just what that land use is going to look like when all of a sudden done with a number of affordable units and what, what an envelope would look like. So it's kind of hard to answer your question. Typically, city codes are robust when it comes to parking requirements. I don't know if they're less than the state requirement, but it's all something that I think we're certainly got, where we have an open mind and are willing to look at very closely when, when and if we get down to that stage. You know, and then the question about the teachers and everybody across the street, you know, I think whatever the prevailing market rate is, that's one thing that may or may not be reachable for a teacher, but I think it probably will be, because it's, you know, in an area that has a certain rent structure that seems to be, from my cursory look at things, able to be reached by a working couple. So I don't know if that can be guaranteed in any way, but, you know, we're aiming to bring a project to market that is going to be rented, you know, and if we, if we place it at $6,000 a month, nobody's gonna come. So I think that's just part of the downstream process, too, and it's far ahead of the, the game here, because by the time you do an EIR, come back to you in a year and a half, year, year and a half, and, and then do construction drawings and permitting, you know, it's two years at least down the road. And at that time, what's the market gonna look like? That's why I'm answering it in the ethical.
Thank you very much. It's well-stated. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I'm looking for Mr. Jones. Do you have any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a question that I had talked about earlier, about being able to limit the traffic direction at a couple times of the day. I don't know from the staff, I didn't quite understand the answer of whether that's possible to do that or not. I'd just like to ask, Mr. Eadie, would you be amenable to limiting the traffic direction at a couple key times of the day relative to the high school traffic?
Councilman Jones, what I think it comes down to in that particular instance, when you have a finite question like that, is that when we go through the environmental process, it'll identify what, if any, impacts there are. And the first people that are gonna speak up and respond to whatever mitigation measures are proposed in the EIR will be the Department of Public Works, and they'll tell us all, based on their expertise, what's necessary and appropriate. I don't think I can commit to something like that when we don't even, you know, we're at the baby step stage here, even though I've been here six years, it's just the beginning if we move forward. So I'd have to defer on that one a little bit.
Oh, you'd only have to do it during the school year, a couple.
True, it may be.
Monday through Friday, and only a couple times a day. Anyway.
Very well end up being like that, you know, it's just, I think we need a very good.
Now, okay, well, we can work on that later. Madam Mayor, if I have other questions, should I ask them now or wait until we have the public testimony?
Are your questions for staff or for Mr. Eadie or his attorney?
Well, for Mr. Eadie.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, Mr. Eadie, you have a large property there, and you're gonna use 8.8 acres, which is gonna leave another 34.1. And I'm wondering, after we evaluate the impacts that the instant project will have, do you have any idea what we're gonna be looking at, at the future? If anything, are you just gonna keep that large office building and use the balance of the land for parking, or do you have any other plans for that property?
In answer to your question, Councilman Jones, I think that, first of all, the building is very sizable, and it's going to stay. We just put a new roof on, new HVAC, repaired the pond, millions of dollars worth of money into that project, so that office building will stay. You know, I've heard that in the past year or two, there's always been a little concern about diminishing the city's industrial base. Well, here's a site where there's ample room elsewhere on the site to add to that industrial base with more biotech or something like that, if the occasion arises. It's, that's the flexibility and beauty of having a large site that's under one ownership. So right now, the present plan is just for the multifamily component added to the existing building, but that's not to say that it wouldn't be able to be opportunities for expansion in the future, along the lines I mentioned.
Have you considered additional apartments or maybe condominiums? I really would like to see condominiums somewhere where people could get a stake in a property and then maybe translate that stake into something better, and in the process, be able to deduct their monthly payments from their income tax. Did you ever consider condominiums for that?
I heard you, I heard you very clearly on the previous project, the lakes and on Mill Creek, I think, too, and that's something we can study. I have an open mind. We've got business models that, you know, we can look at, but again, that's something when, if we do a deep dive into the project, those kinds of considerations are clearly going to be examined.
Okay, and finally, just to, so I can get it straight, what are the rents, well, maybe you said earlier, I didn't catch it, what are the rents for the very low and, and the low units that you're proposing?
Carlos had a exhibit that denoted what, how much they, how much income they have to have or not have. I don't think I have that number for the rents for those units readily available unless you do, Carlos.
I, the table that I had provided on that one slide just gave you the income limits for a two-person household, the Ventura County limits. I don't have the total, the breakdown for the rent for each unit. I don't have that on me right now.
Is that rated as the amount of money of the rent, or is that rated as a proportion of the income relative to the, you, you stated the maximum income for being very low, was that $42,000, and then you had a, I believe, a maximum income for the low? Do you have those numbers again?
Councilman, just for clarification, are you asking what the income numbers are?
Yes, and I want to try to translate that into what the people could afford to pay if they have those income levels.
And if I can just provide additional clarification to that, the numbers listed in the chart that Carlos is gonna bring up from the PowerPoint simply states the maximum income for each level of affordability. That just qualifies you to rent an apartment at that level? It doesn't dictate what the rent would be for a particular unit.
Oh, I thought perhaps there was a ratio that was available.
Jones, this is Tom Cohen. The typical ratio is 30% of your income, your gross income can be dedicated to housing costs. That's just a very, that's a very general statement. I'm not 100% on its accuracy, but that's what I've seen in the past.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a good statement, Tom. I appreciate it, and that gives me an idea of what the rent would be, anyway. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, if there are no further questions, we can call our speakers, and I was mistaken earlier when I said 25. It's actually 14. Mr. Adam?
I have my hand up. May we have a five-minute break, please?
Sure, we'll have a five-minute break.
We've been at it for over two and a half hours. Is that okay?
I'm asking my colleagues. Everybody in agreement?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break then.
Thank you.
Okay, we are returning from our five-minute, well, seven-minute break. And I believe we have most of our council members back. We're missing Councilmember McNamee, I believe. But, uh, we do have a quorum. I had scheduled as our next speaker, Mr. Tom Cohen, but I think David Edie, Mr. Edie, uh, did very well fending, uh, all of these, these questions. I'm not sure whether Mr. Cohen wants to weigh in necessarily. I don't see him momentarily, I don't see him right now. And there's, uh, Councilmember McNamee. So, um, I will then go to our first speaker via video, and that is Una Hart, followed by Kat Selm, and then Ariela Ginosa. Is Una there? Yes, she is. Good evening.
And, uh, let me just
Sure. Thank you very much for, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to City Council. Um, this was an interesting presentation to see. Uh, please know my name is Una Hart. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Thousand Oaks and for twenty-nine years I have been a resident of Westlake Hills. Uh, and I am also a board member of the Westlake Hills Homelands Association. And I'm speaking on behalf of the board tonight. Uh, we are the six hundred-plus homes that are located around, uh, Westlake Boulevard, founded by Hillcrest, Duesenberg, and just north of, uh, the shopping center on Thousand Oaks.
Um, Excuse me, somebody else is talking in the background and it's hard for me to understand what you're saying.
Okay, well, let me try to speak up. Um,
I wish we could get rid of whomever is talking in the background.
Feedback loop and I've heard it and I apologize. Um, I don't see how
Can you turn it off?
I have turned it off.
Oh, you have? Okay, good. That was me speaking.
So I will turn off more. I'm a board member of the Westlake Hills Homelands Association. Yeah, so part of it is. Um, our situation is, you know, I've listened to this presentation and one of my concerns is, and I'm dismayed, is there are existing residents in this area that are not being considered. We are six hundred homes.
Is it possible for you to turn off your, I'm not sure what it is, computer?
I just
Pardon me?
And I've heard it and I apologize. Am I still on or did I get shut down?
No, no, you're, you're still on, but we're still receiving the feedback, which is making
Yeah, I know that one and I'm not sure how to kill it. So if you would like to maybe, um, move me till later in our
Okay, that sounds good. We can certainly do that.
If someone of staff helped me, um, figure it out.
We will. Okay, why don't you stay there and we will go to the next speaker and hopefully staff can, can help you. Our next speaker is Rosanna Guerra, followed by Kat, I'm sorry, Kat Selm, Ariela Ginosa. So Kat Selm is next. Is Kat with us? No. Okay, then we will go to Ariela Ginosa by phone.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Ariela Ginosa. I've lived in Thousand Oaks now for almost thirty years. I appreciate the opportunity, council members and mayor, uh, to speak this evening. So I'd like to ask, please, if you would all take a moment to consider the absolutely devastating impact the proposed development at One Baxter Way would have on all facets of life in Thousand Oaks. Each of you were elected by residents who value the qualities and characteristics that make Thousand Oaks the uniquely cherished and desirable city it is and has been for many years. We have entrusted all of you with protecting and preserving the cleanliness, safety, accessibility, desirability, beauty, and functionality of the city of Thousand Oaks. There are plenty of communities in California that offer densely populated city living and multifamily housing units in every price range and type of location. Thousand Oaks is a planned community designed around single-family homes, parks, schools, local businesses, restaurants, stores, and medical facilities. The people who live here and who are moving here are doing so because they desire to live in such a community. Thousand Oaks has many multifamily housing units all over the city already, with plenty more being built as I speak. There is absolutely no possible way Thousand Oaks Boulevard, most notably between Linderow and Westlake Boulevards, could, under any circumstances, with any mitigation measures, bear the strain of additional traffic, especially during drop-off and pickup times at Westlake High School and when folks are arriving and leaving work in the same area. As it is, it's extremely dangerous for both parents and kids driving and walking during drop-off and pickup times at Westlake High School, as well as for nearby Oaks Christian students and their families. I ask that you please prioritize the will of the law-abiding, tax-paying citizens and electors in this community. We do not want the development at One Baxter Way, as it will serve only to add congestion to our streets, schools, and neighborhoods. It will decimate long-lived oak, oak and other protected trees, and it would greatly endanger the safety of the residents working and taking kids to school in our community on a daily basis. And for what? What is the expected benefit of jamming a bunch of apartments in an area that is and has been for many years commercial? Let another employer occupy the space and provide local jobs and maintain the balance and the aesthetic of the area. Please stand up and defend against overdevelopment and overcrowding in our community. Please do not destroy the beauty of Thousand Oaks with multifamily housing uni- multifamily housing units where they will stick out like a sore thumb and when they, where they are not needed or wanted. It would not be wise to rest on the laurels of the commitment folks in this community have to maintaining and preserving it. Everything in life is reciprocal. Treat the residents of Thousand Oaks with respect and regard for their wishes and preferences and enjoy what will continue to be a highly desirable community for years to come. Disregard the voices of those living, supporting, and maintaining this community, and you will have another dilapidated, dangerous, miserable city in which no one will want to live. Look around California. You cannot take prideful residents and tax-paying citizens for granted. When the will of those living in the community is ignored, they leave and our once beautiful cities are destroyed for no meritorious reason. Please stop the proposed development at One Baxter Way and protect the safety, beauty, and manageability of our Thousand Oaks community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be, do we have Kat Selm back?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Oh, okay, good. It worked. Um, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kat and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. And I want to first applaud the council for providing the translation services. I think that's long overdue and that's great. Um, so it's not every day that council members can have the thorough oversight and deliberation on a single housing project. In fact, once the general plan is passed and mixed-use zoning is scattered throughout the city, I understand this process will no longer exist. So for this reason, it's critical for council members and the public to make known to developers what kinds of community benefits the residents of Thousand Oaks are looking for now, and also what will likely result from public feedback and the development of the general plan update. In the community survey conducted by the city in the spring of 2020, residents rated housing challenges as one of their top concerns and with good reason. California is in a housing crisis, the effects of which are felt by all of us, whether directly or indirectly. California, like the rest of the world, is also in a climate crisis. Folks in Thousand Oaks also recognize this, as evidenced in the Community Attitude Survey. Every year the survey's been done, residents have increasingly expressed a desire to protect the environment. The times we live in of mounting environmental and social crises demand bold action from leadership. Projects and policies that address more than one issue at a time are going to have to become commonplace if we hope to have a positive impact for the future. However, I believe this can be done. One of the nation's largest nonprofit affordable housing developers, the National Core, has stated that in today's market, by building all-electric, developers save on the cost of installing pipelines to connect homes to the gas system. Today's heat pumps are three to four times less energy-intensive than gas furnaces. And since heat pumps provide both heating and cooling, builders save on the cost of installing air conditioning systems. All-electric housing developments are also better positioned to cash in on the utility lowering benefits associated with rooftop solar. In addition, removing gas from our homes can positively impact the health of at-risk citizens. These cost savings can help make housing projects more affordable for renters and home buyers. The added bonus is a reduced cost to the tenants of these housing complexes. At Core's Day Creek Senior Villas in Rancho Cucamonga, they generate all of the energy needed to meet residents' electricity needs onsite, producing big savings that are passed along to those living there. Their electricity bills are six dollars a month with basic metering charge and no gas bill. They estimate that their operational savings for typical developments range from twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars a year, which can equal up to millions after a thirty-year time period. The cost savings, the need for affordable housing, and the upcoming uncertainty around the CEC's updated building standards have led the Core to develop all-electric in their affordable housing projects. We are in a housing crisis, we are in a climate crisis, and we live in a time where creativity and solving multiple problems at once are critical to our survival as a species. These are not just building projects, they're our lives and our livelihoods. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I'm not sure, Mr. Cohen, did you want to speak? Okay.
Mayor, are you? I, I was just part of the applicant team.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have Clint, joining us via video, uh, followed by Mike Dutra. Also wanted to ask our speakers to let us know where you live, not the address, just the city. Thank you. Hi, Clint.
Good evening, mayor and city, uh, council. My name is Clint and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. Uh, with each proposed development, the city of Thousand Oaks has another opportunity to lead the way with affordable, safe, and sustainable housing. Just today, the chief executive of, of the British Environment Agency stated that the climate emergency is already hitting worst-case scenario levels. And if left unchecked, will lead to the collapse of ecosystems with dire consequences for humanity. I understand that any development at One Baxter Way wouldn't happen for some time, but I think it's important to be thinking about sustainability and affordability at every step of the way. Around forty thousand workers commute into Thousand Oaks every day, creating localized air pollution and contributing to a dangerous rise in global temperatures. What if we could provide those workers with a place to call home? Through an inclusionary housing ordinance, the city could provide affordable housing for essential workers, the caregivers, the, the, the delivery persons, uh, grocery and restaurant workers, medical staff, and teachers. Uh, communities function better when everyone is involved in the stewardship of their surroundings. So I think this, the city should focus on bringing people together rather than creating barriers to inclusivity. Uh, adopting a resolution for diversity, inclusion, and equity for all citizens should absolutely be a priority and would go a long way to encourage a community where the skills and talents of every person, regardless of their differences, could contribute to building an equitable and sustainable future for the entire Cano Valley. Sustainability can be defined as a focus on meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. It should be imperative that we give future generations the tools to thrive in an uncertain climate. Keep trees where they are, and if you can't relocate them, and then make sure they're properly cared for afterwards. Electrify all new buildings instead of running gas lines and you'll save money in the process. Install rooftop solar and EV charging stations. Create microgrids and avoid disasters like the one that just happened in Texas. Create neighborhood town squares and encourage walking and biking. Allow the city of Thousand Oaks to lead the way towards a just, equitable, resilient, and sustainable future and help create a place we can all be proud to call home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Mike Dutra, followed by Dr. and Mrs. Tachenko via phone. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, my name is Mike Dutra. Um, I've lived in the area for about, uh, over thirty years. Moved here from, uh, Venice, California, and, uh, moved to Aguirre Hills mainly for the safety and the school systems out here. Uh, I currently live in, uh, Newberry Park. And I am also a business owner, uh, in Westlake Village, uh, right off of Villa Colina. So I own, uh, Can Do Graphics, which is a printing company. Uh, what we've seen as a business out here is the lack of affordable, uh, workers. Uh, we're noticing that people that used to be able to commute from either the valley or from Camarillo or Ventura are now finding, um, jobs down in those areas, uh, working for the fifteen to twenty-five dollar an hour range, uh, and not, uh, willing to do the commuting. Uh, it's very difficult to find, uh, people on It's very difficult to find people in our area to do these types of jobs, basically because of the affordable living. People that are making $15 to $25 an hour are living and renting rooms, or they're basically living with their parents. I'm looking forward to this plan on a selfish reason, because of the fact that my kids... I have three children, around 30 years of age, cannot afford to move into this area, and they all make north of $100,000 a year. So not only that, but we do a lot of work with nonprofits in the area, and especially Adelante Comunitad Caneo, pardon my lack of slang there. And God bless those people, and we have a need in our community to help them. So my underlying statement is, is this is such a beautiful area, I love this area, and being an older person, we don't foresee moving out of this area for the next 20 to 25 years. And we think this area is a place where it should be inclusive instead of exclusive. And because of the affordability of housing, it is exclusive now. So we hope that you take flexibility, council members, to look at this plan and give it a go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dr. and Mrs. Tachenko by phone, and then after that, we'll have the Chamber of Commerce's Danielle Borja, joining us via video.
All right. Hello, this is Mrs. Tachenko. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity. I really welcome the day, again, where we can all be actually sitting in chambers, seeing one another, and having a normal conversation and a normal meeting. I have to say, I do agree, I'm going to break with protocol here, and I do agree with the first speaker. We are residents of Westlake Village since 1993, and since then, we've seen traffic absolutely out of control now, where it used to take a few minutes to go through the traffic light, it can take upwards of 20 or more minutes. So I completely agree with that one speaker regarding the traffic, and I can't stand the word mitigation. I can save all you guys millions of dollars by telling you, "There's going to be more traffic." It's just a no-brainer if, you know, something of this giant, giant, almost like a Disneyland of what the developers are talking about goes in over there. So to that point, I think it would be an excellent use to actually have more businesses come in there regarding the gentleman that just spoke, to bringing more jobs into the area. I also wanted to make a comment about the other two speakers using the buzzwords and the propaganda of the day, equitable, sustainable, inclusive. Where do they think electricity comes from? They're talking about all-electric cities and apartments. Electricity is generated by natural gas and coal. So this is another propagandistic things that people have not thought out, nor are they well-versed in or educated in. And then I just want to end by saying, I greatly respect you all, and I just wanted to remind the City Council that the City Council members are made up of employees that we have elected to do the people's will, not the developer's will, not Rick Caruso's will, not the governor's will, who will soon be recalled. Our will. We elected you to listen to us, to hear us, and carry out what we elected you to do. So I greatly appreciate your time, and I thank you very, very much for it.
Next up, we have Danielle Borja, followed by Sally Hibbits. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña and members of the City Council. My name is Danielle Borja, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks and president/CEO of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber. I represent over 800 businesses in the communities of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, and Agoura Hills. The Board of Directors for the Chamber would like to express our support for the proposed allocation of housing units for the mixed-use project at One Baxter Way. At a recent economic forecast event, Dr. Beth Steinberg, managing director of Westlake Village BioPartners, started her remarks talking about eight new biotech startups that have already added over 450 jobs and are continuing to grow in the city of Thousand Oaks. These startups, and future startups, are attracting employees from around the world that are single or may have young families. And in order to attract these employees, she talked about needing a tangible vision to recruit this young talent. The Chamber believes a project like Gateway at the Oaks is that tangible vision, one where residents can have a variety of amenities at their doorstep. Think about residents walking over for dinner at The Grill, or Paul Martin's, or daily needs like groceries from the new Amazon Fresh, or picking up their dry cleaning. In addition to the promenade, there are many small businesses in the immediate area, including craft breweries like 14 Cannons and Five Threads Brewing Company, and Halo Salt Spa, that would attract these young professionals. We also have existing biotech companies, including Takeda and Thousand Oaks, that fully support this proposed prescreen. They have been manufacturing in the city of Thousand Oaks for over 25 years, and also speak to the importance of continuing to find ways to attract young professionals by expanding the variety of available housing options. As you know, this is merely a prescreen, and there will be ample time to ensure this project meets the needs of businesses and residents alike. On behalf of our board and our members, I urge you to support this project's prescreen approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sally Hibbits, followed by Sister Lisa McGaffin. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, City Council members and staff. My name is Sally Hibbits, and I have lived in the Thousand Oaks area since 1973, so I guess I'm considered kind of an old-timer. This evening, I want to make very clear that I'm not part of the usual NIMBY crowd. However, I do want to add my "but." But do go ahead and build the apartments, if you must, on the Baxter property, but absolutely not to the scale as proposed. This complex needs to be downsized considerably and include far more affordable units. My concern is chiefly the excessive traffic and safety impact that the approximately 240-plus apartment units will have upon this area. I live in Westlake Hills and drive past the location numerous times a day. When the high school is in session, the students park their cars on all the adjacent streets around the campus. I doubt the developer has taken that into account at all, since the campus has been closed for a year now and may not be aware of the usual and customary traffic patterns. I've seen students parking their cars on Lakeview almost to the freeway overpass. The developer proposes a large parking structure to supposedly accommodate the needs of the residents. When I drove onto the property today to investigate the space, I noticed that the parking garage will be a great distance from the residential buildings. It will be positioned totally south of the Promenade Bridge. If I was to live in one of those apartment buildings, there is no way that I would park that great distance from my residence. It would make unloading children and groceries almost impossible. Obviously, the proposed parking structure is primarily going to be used by the business building occupants. Therefore, parking for the apartments will flow off-site onto the area streets to the excess, which will further complicate the student parking situation. The throngs of students that I've seen walking across the intersection of Thousand Oaks and the Lakeview several times a day, it's not just twice a day either, because there's a lunchtime group that leaves too, is extremely large. Now, and by you adding more congestion to that corner, it will further exacerbate this safety problem for these children. Are you putting the city at risk by creating an increasing liability? Another factor to consider is the impact of this added congestion to the To and Westlake intersection. If you drive through the intersection of Westlake and Thousand Oaks between 7:00 to 8:30 a.m. on any normal school day, pre-COVID, it's an absolute nightmare. Traffic is often at gridlock, let alone what it will be with the addition of such a large complex. Then at rush hour in the evening, it's equally obnoxious. I am opposed to this huge allocation of units. If housing needs to go in there, reduce it to maybe 100 units or less, and certainly make it closer to 50% affordable. I'm sure the builder won't do that, but it would be in my dream.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sister Lisa McGaffin, followed by Roseanne Witt. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña and Council. My name is Sister Lisa McGaffin, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here tonight to speak in support of this agenda, item 9A, and in particular, for the 29 affordable units in the very low and low-income categories that are included in this plan. In my involvement with many mansions for the last 25 years, I've seen the crisis of inadequate affordable income housing absolutely explode. And as I stated last month, I can report that many mansions currently has a waiting list of more than 3,000 households, not just individuals' households. And unfortunately, the waiting list is currently closed to new registers, since we don't want to set up unrealistic expectations. I found one point of the evaluation criteria particularly interesting. The question is, is the site suitable for residential use? And a windshield tour of the area demonstrates just how suitable this parcel is. Its proximity to open space, commerce, professional services, entertainment, and education makes it particularly suitable. Workforce housing within walking distance to various places of employment would be really fantastic. In addition, it is significant that this proposed concept is designed for approximately 27 units per acre, lower than the maximum base density of 30 units. One observation that many of us have made is that the eastern area of Thousand Oaks, despite the perception of it being a more affluent area, includes many homeless individuals who regularly stay there. As noted in the staff report, there is public transit, a bus stop, available adjacent to the site along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And I hope you realize that a homeless person often takes up residence on that bus bench or the other benches along that area. The site of the gentleman last September, when our temperatures were well over 100 degrees, reminded me again and again of our need for affordable housing. A bus bench is not an appropriate home for anyone, and it is our responsibility to demonstrate our consistent political will to take care of our low-income brothers and sisters. And so in summary, I believe that this site is appropriate for residential use, and it's an important step forward in advancing the cause of inclusionary housing in our city. Beyond a doubt, we have a responsibility to our homeless brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Roseanne Witt, followed by Bonnie Clarfield-Balen. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members and staff. My name is Roseanne Witt. I'm a 27-year resident of Thousand Oaks and in that capacity. I'd like to note that the local Acorn reported four days ago that global real estate investment giant Kennedy Wilson, aka One Baxter Way LP, plans to remove three protected oaks and 28 protected landmark trees, while the staff report and City Council's agenda makes no mention of protected trees being slated for destruction. Why would the Acorn report that if it wasn't true? I hope residents can still expect transparency in city decision-making. How can we make informed comments when pertinent data is unavailable to us? Were council members made aware of the developers' intention to cut down our protected trees so as to inform their prescreen decision? Are our namesake oaks actually slated for axing or not? According to the Acorn, there are 530 trees in the survey area, 453 oak trees, and 46 landmark trees. The article says the 31 protected trees would be removed and replaced at a three-to-one ratio. What goes unstated, and what few people living here know, is that while we think our heritage oaks and landmark trees have protections, healthy trees that are decades and even hundreds of years old are routinely allowed to be cut down, transplanted, which oaks are notoriously poorly adapted to, or replaced with small nursery-container trees that frequently don't survive. It often seems like mitigation requirements merely placate the public into thinking our trees are safe, while developments actually run roughshod over them. How many will actually survive this project? At what point in the future will Thousand Oaks have to change our name to 100 Oaks? Housing projects built right next to the freeway are exposed to the worst air pollution levels in our community. They should be required to mitigate that pollution to protect their tenants' health. Chopping down ancient trees that convert carbon pollution into oxygen is not something the council should allow. Thousand Oaks should be able to build sufficient housing that's actually affordable and protect our namesake oak trees. Please make certain we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Bonnie Clarfield-Balen, followed by Sean Maradian, and then we will go back to Una Hart.
Good evening, Mayor Claudia de la Peña, City Council members and city staff. My name is Bonnie Clarfield-Balen, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm speaking as a member of the Caneo Oak Tree Advocates, aka COTA, and I will be reading the letter we sent to City Council members and city staff concerning One Baxter Way. Dear Council members and city staff, Caneo Oak Tree Advocates, COTA does not support the prescreening approval before you this evening. From the diagram in your packet, it is clear that additional ancient protective oaks on this site will be destroyed, along with mitigation trees planted in the 1970s. Our members walked the site many months ago, when we learned that this project would be forthcoming. COTA stresses that time and time again, staff supports tree removals that destroy mitigation efforts from years ago, resulting in either less mitigation or no mitigation at all. This continuing trend guarantees that valuable and declining species, such as the heritage valley oaks on this site, and California black walnut trees, will continue to disappear at alarming rates. While this project may not contain California black walnut trees outside the riparian area, a similar high-density project approved at 299,000 Oaks Boulevard destroyed 100-year-old grove, yet no mitigation planting whatsoever has occurred for that loss yet. Transplanted oak trees, which were also mitigation trees at the Lupe site, did not survive and have not been replaced. Mitigation with tiny trees does not replace 200- to 300-year-old, time-tested trees, even when this does occur. But increasingly, high-density proposals destroy mitigation trees, along with additional heritage trees, as this project intends to do. Resolution 2020-055 requires City Council to find that the applicant is committed to preserving key oak and landmark trees on the site. Yet the maps make it very clear the applicant does not intend to preserve our heritage trees or mitigation trees planted decades ago. We recommend to City Council, deny the initiation of the general plan amendment and allocation of residential units for the proposed project. A much smaller building footprint for the site is required to make your findings honest. Thank you for considering our recommendation. Sincerely, Gail Biancino, Bonnie Clarfield-Balen, Marilyn Carpenter, Tina Frugoli, Joan Edwards, Janet Wall, and Silvana Zutka. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We are now going to the President of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, Sean Maradian.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members. Sean Maradian, lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks and President of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, here in support of the application before you this evening. As a point of clarification, this project does fall on East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. However, it is not within the boundaries of our specific plan area, nor is this applicant a member of our association. We first became aware of this proposal a few years ago, prior to the COVID pandemic. We first became aware of this proposal a few years ago, prior to the COVID pandemic. At that time, the once iconic office park seemed to be suffering from high vacancy and looking to be repurposed. The demand for office space hasn't improved since then. The proposal before you, notwithstanding the proposed split, seems reasonable to enhance the site at approximately five units per gross acre is very low density. At 43 total acres, it has plenty of onsite parking and a setback behind trees and other mature landscape buffers. It's hardly noticeable from the street or any of the surrounding areas. The city of Thousand Oaks wants affordable housing. We currently don't have an affordable housing plan. Therefore, this proposal aids the city's efforts to provide our community with affordable housing incremental until a comprehensive plan is formed. Having residents within walking distance to the promenade, office parks, gyms, educational centers, and other amenities makes this proposal a step towards our vision of a pedestrian-friendly community, which our association strongly supports. On a personal note, I get contacted regularly by small business owners to look for help to house their employees. These are the people that work at some of our city's most admired shops, restaurants, and service centers. The people that take care of us aren't able to live amongst us. They need and would benefit from these units and others like them under your consideration. Considering all the council concerns that have been voiced during the last two pre-screens, this project appears to mitigate all of them. Again, with its modest density, massive amount of unused parking, and invisibility from streets and surrounding areas, we feel it warrants the allocation to begin the formal entitlement process. Please support the application and help reduce our affordable and workforce housing needs. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Una Hart.
Hi there. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I think I've hopefully resolved my technical issues. Again, my name is Una Hart. I've been a 35-year resident of Thousand Oaks. For the past 29 years, I have lived in the Westlake Hills Homeowners Association area. We are the area, the community founded by Westlake, Hillcrest, and Duesenberg behind the shopping and TO. We are 600-plus homes. One of the issues that has dismayed me during this process is there has been no acknowledgement of our current home residents that we are here. We are a large community, and there's a lot of focus on future, but we are not acknowledged our current presence. In addition to Westlake Hills, it doesn't seem to be any mention about Hidden Canyon, which is also bound on the boundary, the boundary on the other side of Thousand Oaks High School. Hidden Canyon is the second-largest association in Ventura County. We have some very rich residential units in this area, and I don't hear anybody talking about the impact on us. We are aware of the impact that it could have on the Westlake Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We are aware of the traffic. We're also very knowledgeable about the promenade. And this proposed property has one driveway, and the opportunity of saying, well, we can mitigate or consider mitigation by going to the bridge. Well, let's not forget that the promenade has two access points. It has one entry-exit off Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and it goes to Westlake Boulevard. As a board member and as part of our community, we are not in favor of this development. At this time, our understanding is that what is before the city council is a zoning change, and that is what we are against right now. We are proposing a zoning change from what it current stats to a high-density residential. There has been no council with us. We are not aware of what these plans are. And unfortunately, we've all lived here long enough to understand that, I get it, you're saying down the line, we can do the traffic impact. We can do other things and mitigate this or move it forward. The reality is, in our experience, as many homeowners have here for 30 years, once the momentum starts, it's really hard to stop. And the compromise has always seemed to be on the homeowners and the current residents. I appreciate that we are trying to have a vision looking forward. Also, understand that the city is currently developing an alternative land plan. Why is this going ahead of the fact? Let us do that first, and then consider this plan in conjunction with that. Allow us as the residents to have input on that. And so, again, we are not in favor of this zoning change at this time. And I hope you will take us into consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that concludes public comments. We will go back to Mr. Eady for a rebuttal, if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Just I'll hit on a few points here that I heard. Let's begin with the climate. Let's see. Some solar was mentioned, and electricity, all-electric was mentioned. And I think that we're very open to looking into all of those considerations as far as what energy, what type of energy comes to the houses. It's all part of the sustainability evaluation as we design a project. I'm a trustee of the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii. I like to think I know a little bit about sustainability, and I believe most of our projects, if not all of them, are very eco-friendly in that regard with respect to energy. So I would anticipate that we'll aggressively look at that and, you know, I think it'll be very satisfactory. That's just my personal opinion, but I believe we'll get there. Teachers, you know, there was mention of teachers being a priority, and I think Councilman Jones mentioned that, but I heard smatterings of that elsewhere as far as affordability. And we'll certainly look closely at that. That's, you know, the teaching community is extremely important, and we'd like to cater to them, and we'll explore that with whatever project we come up with here. Traffic, again, a number of comments were made about traffic. I can tell you, and I think most people understand this, that it's a complicated issue. You have to be an engineer to understand traffic movements and what the impacts are. There may or may not be traffic impacts, you know? But if there are, and that they can't be mitigated, then maybe it's the project needs to be redesigned. If they can be mitigated, what does that mitigation involve? Is it something as draconian as a whole-new travel lane? Or is it adding a signal or stop signs? It's all part of the traffic analysis that takes place. And also with respect to just one driveway, that also enters into the total traffic picture here in terms of the environmental analysis of the project, the impact analysis, if you will. And that'll be thoroughly examined and is one of the major components of an environmental document. Regarding the, one comment I think Mrs. Hibbert's made about the parking structure and people from the apartments having to walk a distance from that area, and therefore they won't. That's a great comment. And as we work on our plan, we'll take that to heart and consider that aspect of it, so we appreciate it. The trees, I would point out that the Acorn article unfortunately talked about the then-current plan of 2019 and its tree impacts. That's not the plan that's before you today. It's much more conceptual. We don't know exactly what the impacts are going to be, if any, with respect to trees. It's all part of the planning process, and once the architects go to work here. So I'm not saying there won't be any trees that are going to be affected, but I can tell you that, you know, the plan that was discussed in the Acorn is not the plan that's before you tonight. Also, you know, the trees are highly regulated by the city, so they'll have a lot to say about this. And I know it's a sensitive issue. It's in the name of the city, so that's certainly doesn't take any clarification. Those are the, on the zone change, by the way, staff might want to repeat this, but what I heard from Carlos is we're not talking about a zone change tonight. We're talking about whether or not the project potentially has merit to be considered further and more fully by going through a longer and more involved process. We're not talking about changing the zone tonight. So I just would point that out to everyone. I think that covers most of everything I can think of in a rebuttal, and again, happy to answer questions.
I have one item to add.
Sure.
In response to the comment from the woman about not hearing from us as part of our outreach, that is going to be a significant part of our efforts in when this project starts to take, you know, as we start to put pencil to paper here. There's going to be outreach to all the associations and residents in the area. We're talking to the businesses in the area. There will be no stone unturned in our efforts to communicate with our neighbors. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. There was some initial outreach over a year ago, and we thought this project may be coming sooner, but it was very sporadic and it was not as, not the kind of outreach we expect to do. So rest assured, we'll be talking to all of you.
Thanks for that amplification. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any questions that staff would like to answer that were brought up by the speakers?
This is Carlos, project planner. I have just one comment regarding, which was already touched on by the project applicant, regarding the parking structure location relative to the proposed multifamily residential units. The parking structure, as I mentioned in the staff's presentation, is served two purposes. The parking structure will provide parking for not only the industrial office use, but also provide the parking for the residential uses. However, there will be additional parking provided around the perimeter of the proposed multifamily buildings to provide parking closer to those units. And the applicant has mentioned in their project narrative, and as the project is further refined through the formal application review process, that they are considering some type of parking, semi-subterranean parking underneath those multifamily structures. So that's just, I want to reiterate that, that staff hasn't looked at that, and so has the applicant, and they will try to address the issue should the units be allocated tonight.
And if I can add to that, I just want to reiterate that tree protection and implementation of the city's tree ordinance is of supreme importance to staff. It is something that we take very seriously, and we are robust in our implementation of that ordinance and holding those that violated accountable to the degree that we can. And the applicant did a wonderful job of addressing many of the comments, as Carlos pointed out, that were raised by many of the speakers tonight. But if this project does move forward, it would undergo a robust and transparent public review process along with any associated reports that would be required.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Are there any other questions from council members? I do have questions, but I want to make sure that I recognize my colleagues first. I don't see hands up. I would like to ask Mr. Parker about the tree ordinance that you mentioned. We've had a couple of projects that are now, one is completed, the other one is in process or in progress. And there was a mention that trees were not planted to mitigate. I know this has nothing to do with what's before us this evening. However, it does talk to the broader concept of tree preservation. Do we know whether the mitigation, tree mitigation for the two projects that were mentioned has already happened or will happen?
Yes. All tree mitigation required for every project will move forward as planned. In instances where the plan had to change, amendments were made to the requirements. But rest assured that all implementation of the tree ordinance associated with any project's approval will move forward in the process.
And then another question I have is, Westlake High School is a pretty busy, noisy school, like any high school, with football games, soccer games, tennis matches and whatnot, fireworks, music. And is that something that if apartments were to be built, would need to be disclosed to residents, that there might be noise issues? Well, actually not might, but there will be.
Noise-related matters would definitely be considered as part of the sequel review if the project moves forward. Noise and the height and time of day does play a factor in that, and it would be incumbent upon the applicant to address noise issues in their lease as they would with any project that they would have anywhere throughout the state.
Okay. Any questions? I'm looking at my colleagues again. I see Mr. Adam. Go ahead. Your microphone, please, Mr. Adam. Thank you.
Yeah, you got me now. Good, okay. Yeah, the question period's over. If I may, I believe we do have a motion on the floor that was made a while back, but I think it's still valid. And I would like to speak to that motion, if I may.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Let me just start out with a fact. 60% of our workforce in the city of Thousand Oaks comes into the city and then leaves the city every day. Every day. Because basically, they can't afford to live here, but there are job opportunities here. So that naturally increases traffic, and it means they earn money here in Thousand Oaks, but then they spend it in Simi or Mar Park or Camarillo, or wherever they happen to live. They don't spend it here in our city. Now, let's take this area that we're talking about, One Baxter Way, and talk about workforce folks around it. We have the promenade. A lot of service workers there. I would say dozens, if not maybe up into the hundreds. I don't know the exact number. We have Westlake High School. 85 teachers. When you add in all the ancillary staff, well over 100 people. Oaks Christian right down the road, probably close to Westlake High School, another 100 or so. The Los Robles Rehab Center. It's almost right across the street. I checked today. I think there's 60 folks working there. These are hundreds of workers in this one area that eminently qualify for workforce housing, which, come on, folks, we've been talking about workforce housing now for months, if not years. We have to get to the point where we stop talking about it and we start supplying it. And to me, this site has a very unique opportunity to do just like that. It's walkable. When you talk about the teachers, I got this from a very reliable source. That first five years as a teacher, it's tough. You look at it, maybe $40,000, $45,000 a year. You need to get established. Workforce housing could help folks like that get established in our city. And this site could provide that so-called missing middle that we do not have at this point, and that I think we desperately need. I would ask the builder, I would ask Kennedy Wilson. They took 29 units for affordable/workforce housing. There's still another 24 out there that they could apply for, that they did not. I would ask them to seriously take a look at those other 24 units and show me a willingness to work with the city through incentives or whatever it is, financial support, to increase that workforce housing number. I'd like to see this as a model for workforce housing, considering the number of workers surrounding it. We have a chance for a master plan community here. We can house teachers, firefighters, the police, healthcare workers, nurses, service workers. They're all right there. They're all right there. And there's a lot of other great amenities too with the, of course, with the promenade right next door and those kind of connections. So workforce housing near an employment center, and I don't think you can argue that this is definitely an employment center. Quality housing in a reasonable proximity to that workplace. I think that's what we're looking for. You heard it tonight with our speakers. They're desperate to live in Thousand Oaks. They're desperate to stay in Thousand Oaks. They're desperate to live in Thousand Oaks. They're desperate to stay in Thousand Oaks. And I just feel, as a council member, it's my responsibility to help make that happen. And we have a very unique opportunity in this particular site to do just that. You know, you sprinkle in workforce housing amidst market rate. What a great way to get people started, get people assimilated in the community, and chip away a little bit at that economic wall that's been built around this city over the decades. So you may be able to tell that I'm in favor of the motion. Probably gave myself away there, but I really do feel that we've looked at a lot of sites over the last few months, but this one in particular, this one in particular, could be a model, a model for not just our city, but for other cities for that workforce housing that I think is just so, so important. Thank you. Ta-da.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adam. Mayor Protem Bob Angler, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I can add a whole lot to my colleague's soliloquy there. The, like any other project, this has some pluses and some minuses. I think we have to be realistic about that. There is some real opportunity here. I think I will agree with Councilman Adams that this is an opportunity to really make a village campus-type center there that has the ability to help with all the surrounding employer bases for employees. It's a great opportunity. Along with that opportunity, we have the traffic issue that many of our residents are concerned about. Many of us speakers spoke about. We have the, you know, we do like our trees in Thousand Oaks. We have tree issues on that property that need to be worked around. But I feel confident that this particular builder will be able to both deliver on that campus program that we would really like to see there, and also protect the trees and mitigate the traffic. Why do I have that feeling that this is a developer we can trust to do that? The developer, as part of his package, came to us with 29 affordable and very affordable housing units as part of his package. That equates, even if you think it's $100, $200,000 per door, you're talking millions of dollars of community benefit in this property and incorporating those renters into our community. I think that is an indication of the type of people who Kennedy Wilson represents and type of business that perhaps we are able to work with and will come along and address those other issues that I mentioned earlier. So I think I'm with my colleague that this is probably a good location for this type of activity, and I would be in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Maybe the developer can tell me. There are 29 units that are going to be affordable or very affordable. And the total number that would leave another, what, 240 units? If you subtract 29 from the total, how many other units does that leave?
211.
211? And could you just give me quickly, I don't want to prolong this. Could you give me some rundown of what neighborhood those rents would be in, of the 211? Depending on the number of bedrooms or whatever?
Councilman Jones, I mentioned earlier that it would be very difficult to peg what those rent rates are going to be at this stage. You know, we're talking about something that's going to happen two years from now, and I don't know. We haven't done any market studies. Typically, we don't when we start out knowing how long the process is. And, you know, we can do back-of-the- napkin stuff, but it's really a case of, in our particular instance, of whether or not the project has traction in and of itself to be approvable, if you will. We think that the costs of the property today, or the property improvements, particularly the fees and those kind of things that go with it, are pretty high. So it all adds into that before you start establishing rents.
Do you have any idea right now of the makeup of the other 211? Will they be studios or one-bedroom or two?
We're going to look at that. You know, it's something that, two years ago, we had a plan that was basically done to comport with the pre-screen requirements of the time, which required very finite kind of a look at the project with bedroom count and parking count and all of that. This particular time around, though, with the rules changing where you're looking at the big picture, we have not gotten down to that level with this particular version.
Yeah, I have a feeling that some of the larger units are not going to be affordable by teachers. Because I'm a teacher, and I know what you make when you first start teaching very, very little. And as far as the balance of the land that you're not using, you say you're going to leave that very large office building. Just finally, do you have any ideas at all for the rest of the property? It seems to me you have a lot of land left that...
Yes, we have property left to accommodate other land uses, such as biotech, as I mentioned. I believe that in the staff report, there's mention of a requirement that we're going to go through a specific plan, which is basically an ordinance for this property that will probably address, you know, a master plan or at least make mention of the fact that there's room to expand in the future, and what about that? You know, those are kinds of things we've got to talk about too when we go down this path of more detail.
And finally, finally, the parking.
I don't know about anybody else, but my screen froze. Can you hear me?
Parking. Well, I'm on the fence, if you want to know the truth. I'm not objecting to apartments as apartments.
I can hear you now.
Okay, I said I'm on the fence.
Sorry.
I'm not doing a soliloquy, by the way, Bob. You know, after Hamlet's soliloquy, he killed himself, so I don't think Mr. Adam is going to do that, and I hope he doesn't. But I just wonder, is there any way that you can, relative to parking, is there any way that you can, you say you can't make a rule or a demand that people don't go to a certain, like the corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview at certain times of day. Can you limit whether or not people in your tract can park on the curves around the place? Can you tell them they need to park on the site? Or is that impossible?
Well, on public property, you know, parking off-site, the city dictates all of that. You know, basically, we're required to provide for adequate parking on-site, whatever that might be. And ordinarily, you know, you don't have a project that is designed with reliance on having to park outside on public property. I guess I'll make that statement, and of course, Carlos or Kelvin might want to expand on that.
Yeah. What about on the balance of the property that's unused? Would you allow parking there?
It's all part of the equation of design as we move forward. It's possible. There's ample space, as we've all talked about tonight. So, you know, I think that's a consideration.
Well, thank you for your patience with me.
Thank you, sir.
I actually do have a question, a quick follow-up. That is, Mr. Edie, you mentioned that perhaps you would come back in about two years with your proposal. What is your timetable for this?
Well, actually, I was just generalizing about how long the process is, Madam Mayor. Basically, by the statute itself, an EIR, its process takes you a number of months. Let's say eight months. And if we start digesting everything that was talked about tonight and roll up our sleeves and start working on a concept, it'll take a few months to get through to a point where we're comfortable and go through the pre-application process that the staff outlined. And then, of course, there's the hearings after that before the Planning Commission and City Council. And as I said, about the actual construction sequence, then you have to go, if you get approved by the City Council, you've got to go through all of the construction drawings and infrastructure off-site drawings. All of that takes time. So by the time we get in the ground, it's, let's just say it's 16 months at the earliest.
By when do you plan to be before the Planning Commission?
I would say our goal, you know, we'd love to be before the Planning Commission this year. That's probably pretty aggressive, given the fact that the planning process necessarily dictates a number of steps that are driven with public review and responses to public review and those kinds of things. So to the extent we can move with velocity as quickly as we can, that is certainly our goal, Madam Mayor.
Let me just supplement what Dave said, Madam Mayor. The process never goes as quickly as statutes and desires are. And because of the time and the involvement of the community and what we're putting together, I don't see us, I see the entitlement process taking, well, you know, we'll be beyond a year at least.
Most likely, yeah, most likely.
Construction is, Dave knows this better than I do, but it's, there wouldn't be any activity on that property for at least two years, at least.
Correct.
So, but there's still, there's a lot of work to do to even start formulating what a plan looks like. Based on our need to get out into the community and start talking to the residents.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I mentioned earlier, I do have a, it's, traffic, of course, is a grave concern of mine, simply because I do drive Lakeview Canyon Road, well, before the pandemic, several times a day. Traffic is going to be probably your biggest challenge. And add to that the trees. As I was driving through the property, I was really in awe of how the Baxter Building was built into the hillside there and was made part of the hillside, part of this berm. I was impressed with the architecture and the design way back when that really tried to make this building part of nature, part of the earth, part of the soil. I even marveled at the oak trees that were incorporated into the roofing of what seems to me more of a maintenance structure there. Great care was given to the landscape, and not sure if this particular project will be able to respect the trees as much as the original designed it, going as far as to incorporate trees into the roofing of a building. And so, of course, that is a concern as well. I'm on the fence as well. I don't think we have enough affordable units in there. We talk about workforce housing, but truly, what the city has green-lighted in the last few weeks is our apartments that workforce people necessarily will not be able to afford. We heard from residents tonight that are looking to move into an apartment that they can actually afford. And we really need hundreds, more than 1,000 affordable units. 26 or 29 units will make a dent, but certainly not enough. This particular parcel, I really appreciate the fact that you're coming in under the high density of 30 units per acre. I do want to really commend you for that. But even that may not be enough to mitigate the traffic nightmare that will probably play out. And again, you own the land, and you can probably do the financing better than anyone and really provide a lot more affordable units. A lot more, at least, at least 15% units. I struggle with this only because I really respect the fact that you're not seeking a density bonus. But in the end, we really have to have more affordable units in there because we can say we want workforce housing, but if we're not really pushing for more units in there as part of the 240, then we're only making a tiny, tiny little dent in the need for affordable housing. So that is really my two cents. Is there any other council member that would like to discuss the motion? Mr. Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I speak to people here in Thousand Oaks as to why they are here, what brought them here, it's the sense of caring for your family, your neighbor, your community, your commitment to the city. It's the green belt that surrounds our community. The challenge with the green belt is that in the 1970s, as one of the architects of the city that we enjoy today is here on our council, and I'm honored to serve with him, is that that green belt takes land out of use for building housing. Just some facts, Thousand Oaks is 98% built out. And when that happens, prices of housing go up as we provide a wonderful community where people want to come to and live and raise a family. We're up against that challenge right now is by providing housing for those who want to come here. And that's not self-imposed. That's imposed upon us by California Sacramento Legislature. If anyone has an issue with, or having to look at these issues very hard and to look at housing, talk to the governor, talk to our state assembly members, talk to our state senator, who Sacramento imposed on all the cities in California to put in additional housing to, quote, "meet the housing demand need that we're so far behind." And the cities and city councils like you're viewing right now are facing that challenge. How do we answer that question of how to add more housing? Now, let me talk about some myths. The myth that we're going to add 240 units here is going to somehow reduce the price of housing through market supply and demand. I always ask the people the question, how many more units do we have to put in Thousand Oaks to accommodate the need and drop the price of housing because we've got an oversupply? No one has given me an answer. We put in 34 units at the Herbs Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the former Lupe's location, and we've already have, what, 300 applicants for that location? We already have a proposal that I've only been in council, what, eight weeks? Nine weeks? And I've already seen three proposals for mixed-use housing. So if I add up the number of units and then multiply by two, because every one-bedroom studio is going to have two cars in it, I'm over 1,300 vehicles two times a day or 2,600 car trips going up and down Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So the people in Westlake Hills have a valid complaint of this may add and will add more vehicles to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And if any of you have not been out to Westlake and Thousand Oaks Boulevard during school time from 7:30 in the morning to about 8:30, that traffic is backed up like crazy with gridlock at times when the students don't honor the red lights and green lights and block the intersection. Makes it difficult to get through there. So the traffic report coming back will be an interesting see. As people leave down the one street out of Baxter Way towards Thousand Oaks Boulevard, they'll be making a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn, and maybe it will not be impactful upon the traffic flow because they're avoiding going the opposite direction of the school traffic. I don't know. That's what the traffic report will bear out. So I am on the fence as the mayor and Councilman Jones are as well. However, with the general community plan development that's going through right now, I'd like to have a second shot at looking at what you and your creative people can come up with to address traffic, to address parking, to have adequate... come up with to address traffic, to address parking, to have adequate housing that will meet our needs. I'm in no fantasy land that this will drop the price of housing. In fact, the quality work that you do will probably increase demand. You know, 3,000, 3,500, 4,000, and to, and my mind's eye is not unreasonable that would happen here. And I don't see that as being workforce housing, as some people are hoping that people will start moving here, that the 40,000 people that come in and leave Thousand Oaks every day will suddenly say, I don't want to live in Camarillo, Oxnard, Ventura, Simi Moore Park and say, I want to live in Thousand Oaks now because they've got a $4,000 a month apartment. You have your return on investment. And if you don't make that return on investment, the project's not working through. Therefore, we then do not have more housing that is needed in the city. So I honor that. I understand that from an economic standpoint, the numbers have to work. And if they don't, if we put in too much quote affordable housing where you're not making your minimum per unit, the project's not moving forward and we have no housing. So those are the issues that I have. And if I vote no, I won't have a second bite at the apple because then if the general plan goes in place, if you check all the boxes and come back here to the Planning Commission, council may not even see this again. If I say yes, I may see your creativity and see, do you, did you adequately address all these? And I'm willing to give you a try to see if you can address those issues of traffic, parking, how it's going to look, so forth. But I'm under no illusion that people are magically going to walk next door to the promenade and use it and not use their car anymore. This is not going to lower housing prices substantially in Thousand Oaks. You're not going to have workforce housing where people who make 12, 15, $18 an hour are going, may be able to afford it. You need to make your profit margin, I get it. We need to provide housing because Sacramento has a gun to our heads and talk to our legislatures about that. We're in a bad place and we've got to make the best of what we have. So I, I'm leaning towards, even though I'm on the fence, towards saying yes on this, but I'm curious to see what you have coming back. And I am one that I'm going to make it very clear to you, and I usually speak very plainly, I have no problem turning it down at the final stage if it doesn't meet the criteria we just talked about. And I'm sure your talented people can come up with answers. And my concern again is the Westlake Hills folks over there because they're the one with the heaviest impact regarding traffic and it being mitigated through some magical way which we can work this out. So with that, Madam Mayor, may I move 9A residential capacity allocation and initiation of general plan amendment for a project located at one Baxter Way?
Yes, we, you restated your motion and any discussion regarding the motion again? Or should we just go to a vote? I think everybody, Mr. Jones, are you, are you going to speak? You just turned on your microphone.
Oh, no, I, pardon me, I'm not ready to.
Okay. So we have a motion and I will ask the, the city clerk to do a roll call vote unless there are any other questions. None, okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
I have, still have too many unanswered questions. I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
No.
Mayor, that motion carries 3-2 with Councilmember Jones voting no and Mayor Bill De La Peña voting no.
Thank you. And now we go to item number 10, and that is going to be the Planning Commission and Traffic Transportation Advisory Commission appointments. We have them for Mr. Adam and then Mr. McNamie as well. We're going with Mr. Adam first.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First off, let me thank my current Planning Commissioner Kevin Cohen for the remarkable job this young man did. A young man in his 30s, raising a family here in Thousand Oaks. Very admirable that he took on this challenge. It's not easy being a planning commissioner and, and trying to raise a family and trying to have a career to go at the same time. So really respect him for that and I thank him for his service as my planning commissioner. And as far as my traffic commissioner, Mike Reader, good friend of mine, known him for many years, not too many traffic commissioners have a, have an impact like Mike did because Mike brought forward the left turn on the blinking yellow, which, you know, we hear a lot about traffic and that was a kind of a watershed mo, moment in traffic control here in the city. And Mike is solely to be given credit for that. And I think it worked out really well. So I want to thank Kevin and Mike for the wonderful job they did. I'm nominating Don Lanson as my planning commissioner. He's currently the chair of the commission. Don has done a remarkable job. He's earned the respect of the staff. He's earned the respect of the applicants in front of him. He's earned the respect of the public. He's a professional. He's dedicated. He knows the city. I'm very appreciative that Don accepted this position. And as far as my new traffic commissioner, Drew Pletcher, will become my new traffic commissioner. He's a local business owner here, very involved in the city. He's got a long resume of service to the city of Thousand Oaks. And I know Drew's going to do a fine job. So I'm very happy to nominate Don Lanson for my planning commissioner and Drew Pletcher for my traffic commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. So we have a nomination, two nominations, one for planning commission and one for the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission. I don't think there will be any questions or anything like that. I just would like to state that we do have a general plan update that will be reviewed by the planning commission. And we do have conflicts of interest normally. There are financial. I have recused myself for ethical conflicts of interest, even though legally I was not required to do that. And so I would just ask for the nominee to consider doing that because of the general plan amendment. And other than that, I, I don't have any other comments. So then Mr. Adam made a motion and if there are no other questions, then we can go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Are we going to take them one at a time or?
We, we're doing both at the same time, if that's okay with you.
Both at the same time, okay.
And then we go to Councilmember McNamie.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adam, yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations to both of you. We will now go to Councilmember McNamie's appointees, or nominees, I should say. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spent approximately 30 hours interviewing all the applicants for both the Planning Commission and Traffic Commission and talk about a bright group of people who wanted to step up and help the city. It was very refreshing to meet and see the talents that we have there who are willing to do so. Ultimately, it came down to two people that I selected, Justin Link for Planning Commission. He's involved with the Simi County, or Simi Valley Public Improvements, Parking, Traffic Related Impacts. He brings a certain expertise because of his work with Simi Valley that I think will benefit the city and that he has to deal with the state, county, and city issues. And as we navigate through this general plan development and Sacramento's imposition of themselves upon the city, I think his experiences at Simi Valley would cross-pollinate to what we have on Planning Commission. His insights with the Planning Commission is terrific, benefit both the neighborhood and the city and challenges from Sacramento. Victor Hayek is my selection for traffic commissioner. He's again, the chief financial operations officer, financial officer there at the Caneo Valley School District. His goal, like mine, is to safeguard the quality of life we enjoy. We've enjoyed this in Thousand Oaks and we look to maintain that, and he's doing that through traffic. He's got his doctorate in education and leadership, MBA in finance, bachelor's in management. He rounds out his credentials, having been a school superintendent and college professor. Most importantly, he's a former police officer. He's been through traffic school. He's been through the training. He's not only dealt with the law and the theory behind it, but also the practical applications onsite out in the field. So he's got that expertise to bring to traffic commission. I also went on board and observed him at the Caneo Valley School Board where he would tactfully, creatively, calmly explain the financial decisions to the board so that they better understood why he made the decisions he did financially with his recommendations to the board to move. So with that cool, calm, collected, logical explanation, I thought he'd be an excellent choice for traffic commission. So Justin Link for Planning Commission, Victor Hayek for Traffic Commission, those are my two nominees.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? None? Okay, Ms. Rodriguez?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes, and congratulations to both.
Motion carries 5-0.
Yes, thank you. And with that, we can go straight to our city manager, Mr. Powers, for any follow-up items.
Thank you so much, Mayor De La Peña. Just want to, to remind the public that we did on the consent calendar this evening, make a modification to the calendar and our next meeting will be on the 9th of March, which is two weeks from tonight. And as of right now, the primary item of, that will be on that night's agenda will be the waste hauler agreement that the council is well aware of and put that process into action about a year ago. That's it for my update.
Thank you. And we have a closed session, which needs to be announced by our city attorney, Tracy Noonan. But we do have a public speaker, not sure if she's still there with us because it is after 10 o'clock, Peggy Rosenberg. Is she, are you on the phone?
So what I can do is I can announce it while we're waiting to see if Ms. Rosenberg is on the phone.
That sounds good to me. Go ahead.
Great. So we do have one closed session tonight. It's conference with legal counsel on existing litigation before the California Public Utilities Commission, an application by California American Water Company for authorization to increase its revenues pursuant to application number 1607002, with the city of Thousand Oaks as a party of interest. And the closed session is being held pursuant to GMA code section 54956.9A.
Thank you. And I saw the little phone icon. I'm wondering if Ms. Rosenberg is with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for, thank you for waiting the entire evening. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm, I start now?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm Peggy Rosenberg, a 28-year resident of Thousand Oaks, living on Colgate Drive, where we treasure our rural suburban environment. Regarding agenda item 14A, I've never been consulted about having a smart meters and I choose to opt out. As a taxpayer and resident, I'm among those who are effectively your bosses and employers, which means I deserve to have my voice heard and I thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking for myself, my family, and numerous people in my neighborhood. Based on the costs encountered by other AMI rollouts, California American Water's estimate of cost is unrealistic. Experience has shown that actual costs are likely to be a minimum of two to four times higher. According to SCE's AMI business case, the total cost to customers will be greater than $5 billion rather than the $1.6 billion cost explicitly approved by the CPUC, which includes only nominal deployment costs. Most important to me is the fact that the entire water district of Monterey County, which includes the cities of Monterey, Carmel, Pacific Grove, et cetera, has rejected this settlement. Thousand Oaks needs to listen to its residents and reject it too. Please show your respect for your neighbors and remember that all of us in Thousand Oaks deserve your time, attention, and respect, both as your friends and as your employers and the bosses who elected you. Thank you, and I yield my remaining time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rosenberg. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned until next month, March 9th, and have a nice evening and a good rest of the week.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yes, could, could somebody call me for the closed session? I can't find the link that somebody I believe did send me to get there.
We will get you the Zoom link, certainly.
It'll be on it, yes, it'll be on a separate Zoom link. So if anyone has issues or difficulty finding it, just let us know and we'll send it to you.
Yes, if you would do that, I'd appreciate it.
I will assist.
Good night.
Thanks, Otten.